I'll call this meeting to order for the record. It is Tuesday, April fourteenth, two thousand twenty at four thirty-two P M. We'll begin the meeting with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh. Councilwoman Perrow.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Councilman Burnt.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here.
Absent is Councilwoman Strater.
Okay. Option to, uh, item two is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burr.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented, published.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hoagland.
I second the motion.
Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The ayes have it. The, the agenda is agreed to. Item three, consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burr.
I move that we approve the consent agenda for the mayor to sign and the clerk to attest.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I second the motion.
We have a motion of second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post name. The ayes have it. The consent agenda is agreed to. There were no items moved to the consent agenda, so we'll move into item five, A. Department reports, and we were going to hear from our finance department. Of a boy for his annual report.
Mayor, members of the council, it's my pleasure to present to you. Finance Department Annual Update for April twenty twenty. For today's agenda, we will be presenting to you who the finance department is. What we do for the city and our customers. Expectations that you should expect from the finance department. We will review the successes we've had since we've last presented to you over the last twelve months. We'll take a look at the road ahead and the projects that we are looking at completing for you. And then last but not least, we'll stand for any questions. Mayor, members of the council, I get the honored opportunity to inform you that the city has eighteen proud, committed, strong professionals that work on the finance team. Team takes great pride in what they do on a daily basis, and I hope you're seeing the results of that pride. The team enjoys working with each other, they share many laughs together, and they have a great time. The team helps out when fellow team members in need and extends a hand to all their customers. Since our last presentation to you, we have had the opportunity to add a new team member to our family. I want to introduce you to our latest addition, Shanae Eckert. She is our administrative assistant. From an organizational standpoint, the finance department is made up of four divisions. We have the utility billing division, the procurement division, the budget division, and the accounting division. Along with the four divisions, we also oversee and manage the clerks department. And Chris Johnson will present the annual clerks department report to you separately. This slide provides a general list of what the finance department does for all of our customers. Our customers are you, the council, mayor, department staff, business partners, and its citizens. We must be able to deliver the professional expectations of the finance department to many customers in many forms. The interactions are simple to dynamic and usually always different. We must be flexible and adaptive in this ever-changing, growing environment. The finance department strives to deliver a high level of customer service, all while obtaining strong government accountability for all financial transactions. The team acts as the city's internal auditor by providing double and triple checks on all financial transactions. We must be held to the highest levels and be accountable and transparent to our citizens and customers. This slide highlights some of the various professional projects that we have provided our customers this past year. Many of the projects are driven by the ability of our staff to provide internal audit services, efficiency analysis, and deliver accountability transparency to our customers. As previously mentioned, the finance department has the responsibility and resources for the city to deliver these services today and will continue to deliver them in the future for all of our customers upon their requests. Here are a few examples of the projects and the services that we provide our customers. Rate modeling. Brad has been working with all city departments to establish common methodologies and approaches to justify and validate city fees. School resource officer analysis. Karen works with the police department each year to update the projected costs to provide to the school district for the annual SRO contract review. Business model analysis. Jenny works with the police department and the public works team members every year to update our vehicle maintenance facility analysis to determine when the correct time to bring in vehicle maintenance in-house for the city. Contract discrepancies. Keith and Sandra work with the public works team to assist them with the numerous contracts currently going on at the wastewater treatment facility to make sure that we're always in compliance during their construction needs. Peak process improvement. Brad works with Vincent and the innovation team to determine a more efficient and effective way of doing our daily jobs. The finance department follows the city's vision statement with its own mission statement. The finance department mission statement is to deliver a positive experience while upholding integrity, transparency, and fiscal responsibility. The expectations of the finance department. With all the services defined, the finance department is committed to providing financial guidance, training, internal audit, and customer service at the highest standards to all that we serve. This commitment takes time, and we hope you and all of our customers are noticing the changes that we have implemented. We believe as we exceed our customers' expectations, the finance department will deliver a successful clean audit to the council, mayor, to the citizens, and all of our fellow staff members on an annual basis. The finance department takes great pride in obtaining a clean audit every year. This is our report card that is issued to us by our independent auditor. The audit report assures the mayor, council, employees, citizens, and community partners that we are managing the finances for compliance, accuracy, and fiscal responsibility. The annual audit is something we look forward to each year. We embrace the process as a learning opportunity. The information that is obtained during the audit process is consumed and used going forward. The finance department learns each day from their successes and failures to continually, to continually improve what we do for our customers. We will continue to identify gaps, issues, and problems for future training and efficiency opportunities. The auditors investigate our internal controls. They test and validate our financial transactions. They validate the proper use of accounting principles. And at the end, they summarize the results into the annual audit report. This slide presents some of the successes that we've achieved since we've last presented to you about twelve months ago. Starting with customer service. We've continued to improve our paperless movement by reviewing and changing and adjusting our procedures and processes to meet a more streamlined, paperless environment. We've also continued to work with the legal department to validate and verify what documents require ink-on-paper signatures. And we've adapted and adjusted the way we've processed some of those documents moving forward. The next item that we are going to talk about is performance. Performance-based processes and procedures. We've looked at our Visa card system. For school twenty-one, we've adopted a new credit card provider by Bank of America to facilitate the procurement needs for our customers. So this year we'll be deploying a new city Visa card to all employees. Peak improvements, we'll continue to look at those. As we spoke about in previous slides, we're always looking at ways to be more efficient and effective with what we do. Next success is technology. We have officially deployed our new procurement system. It's a software system called Bonfire. April third was the first date that we utilized Bonfire to facilitate our bidding process. The Bonfire system allows us to go one hundred percent paperless and to be a better communication tool than the previous methods that we've used. OpenGov has been deployed to city staff and city directors to obtain their finances from our financial system in a more viable and customer-friendly system. And last but not least on the technology is priority-based budgeting phase two. We successfully delivered to Mayor Tammy the results of priority-based budgeting. We were able to complete phase one and phase two. So we had that as completed last week of December of twenty nineteen. And then the last success we have is in our audit section. We were able to deliver to the city another clean audit for fiscal year twenty nineteen. And we also provided an update and rewrite of twenty-three financial management policies that were adopted by city council over the last twelve months. With the final slide of today's presentation, we'll discuss the road ahead. You will see a theme that many of our listed projects are based on providing our customers with better tools to improve their effectiveness and efficiency, thus freeing up time to manage other aspects of their jobs. It is our responsibility to adapt to the changing landscape of the city and provide the necessary tools to our city employees. We believe that the projects we are working on will do just that. A few of the items on this list will have budgetary requests in the future from the city, while the majority of the projects on this list will be developed in-house utilizing the existing staff abilities to save the city money in both development of software and time spent on processes for all city employees. With customer service as a goal of ours, we are looking to research the electronic payment methodologies for all of our vendors. Within technology, we're going to be improving our budget software, our financial reporting via OpenGov, and our procurement bid processes using Bonfire. Time card, we're currently looking at improving our time card system so it meets our needs for the next ten to twenty years. Priority-based budgeting, we would like to integrate priority-based budgeting into our annual budget process, so we are continuing to work on that. Succession planning is always going on in finance. We're continuing to work with our staff members to develop their skills and abilities so when the time arises, we can promote within. And last but not least is peak. As mentioned before, we're always looking at processes to improve the efficiency and effectiveness of how we do things. In closing, I'd like to state that none of the successes could be possible if it were not for the eighteen dedicated finance team members and the rest of the city staff. They are the ones that deserve all the credit for our successes, for the clean audit, and for the success of the city. There are days when we, the finance department, must be the bad guys. But we always make sure we treat our customers professionally and with respect. I can inform you that the finance team is here to make a difference in what the city becomes. We take great pride in delivering exceptional customer service and impacting the city in a positive way. I want to say thank you to our finance team for showing up to work each day with a great, with a great attitude and a prideful approach to making a difference for the city and its citizens. I hope that you see the difference that our finance team is moving to make. With that, I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Todd. And council, in case you were not aware, Todd had already prepared that during the voiceover in a PowerPoint, so all, all of us are learning new tricks as we were prepared to send this out remotely until we started putting these work sessions back on, but he is live for any questions you may have following up on his presentation. All right. Todd, thank you very much for that recorded presentation and being present. So with that, we will move on to the next item on the agenda, item five B, Community Development Department Planning Process Improvement Discussion, and Jessica, I don't know if you're gonna kick this off or if we're gonna have Caleb start it.
I believe Caleb will be starting it.
All right, then, Mr. Hood.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So I was actually gonna start by just a little bit of, of background. I don't have any new tricks. Every day is, is new and fresh, but I, you're gonna hear kind of some things we've been talking about since the beginning of the year, if not longer. And I've been working pretty closely with my council liaison, Councilwoman Perrow, to present what you're, we're gonna be talking about here for the next half hour or so, forty-five minutes. There are two documents in your packet. There's actually three documents, one's just a cover memo, kind of explaining the other two documents. I'm largely gonna be speaking from the Word document, so if you have that handy, might not be a bad idea. I'm gonna try to summarize that for you in kind of my presentation discussion. And just to that point, feel free to interrupt at any time. I've gotten this kind of broken down into bite-sized pieces. But if you need to interrupt at any point in time, it's not interruption at all, so please feel free to do that. We're really gonna talk about process improvements, but there's also code. So I'll kind of call that out for you when something is really an internal process or policy versus something that we're looking to actually change city code on, so I'll highlight those as we, as we move forward here. The Excel spreadsheet, which again, I don't really plan on working from too terribly much, is largely background information. It, it was used to kind of keep a record over the last few months as well as inform the, the Word document when draft code changes were proposed. So then on to the code changes, even that, the, I've got it kind of broken down into two different sections, so today we're really gonna focus on the yellow highlighted changes, so if you look in the far left-hand column, the yellow highlighted changes are changes that staff is proposing to move forward more immediately. The red ones are proposed to be vetted through our UDC store, uh, steering committee. We would still share our, you know, the yellow ones around one with the UDC work group as well. But the direction, what I've heard anyways thus far from council, are these, these are things that basically you want to move forward with. But that's why we're here, is to check in, to make sure that these are things that you think are ready to move forward. They will still, again, process changes don't, won't necessarily require a public hearing, but anything, any code changes will have two public hearings, one before the Planning and Zoning Commission and one before the city council. So again, I'm here to kind of share an update and get some direction from you on where we're gonna be going here. Let's see if I can actually move. Chris, would you mind going to page six of the Word doc? And I think I'm gonna start there. So you have other things that are in this Word document that are code-related and other, excuse me, code enforcement-related and other changes to city code. If we have time at the end, I'll double back to some of those, but we're really gonna focus on planning process and code changes to start, so. If there's no kind of initial questions, that's kind of the lay of the land and what I hope to kind of get out of the next thirty minutes or so. Kind of the first bite-sized chunk is a, it's the big chunk, but it has to do with neighborhood meetings, so everything I'm gonna talk about now has to do with the neighborhood meeting process. And this is both process and code, but I'm gonna start with kind of the code changes. Our code today requires that a developer or applicant notice property owners within three hundred feet of the property. We are proposing to change that to five hundred feet, so an additional two hundred feet from today's current standard. We've talked about, I've talked with again my council liaison and the mayor both. Should we even tier that? Is there another option in there? Do we do five hundred feet, but maybe it's even further if, if the adjacent properties are one acre, two acre, five acre properties, and you're only noticing a handful of them? Does it change if it's commercial or residential? At the end of the day, and it's not the end of the day yet, but at least the draft you have before you is fairly straightforward and simple. We are a little concerned, I'm a little concerned that if we have too many variables in there, we can screw it up. So if it's five hundred feet unless this, and then you do a thousand or three hundred feet if this condition exists. I have faith in our staff, but we are human, we do make mistakes, so if there's too many variables and how far we're supposed to, to notice neighbors, I think we could screw that up. I think a developer could screw that up, and, and we're, one of the problems we're trying to solve here is to make, make the process predictable, understandable, more straightforward. So what you have before you is just to change from three hundred feet to five hundred feet in code, but again, I'm gonna pause there and see if there's any, any comments, and, and we've certainly talked about other options in there, but today that is the proposal before you.
Just real quick, Chris, I think he wants to go on page five instead of six to get to the right section we're discussing.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mayor. I could share my screen too, I guess, if that's easier.
Council, any thoughts on the five hundred versus the current three hundred recommendation?
I just wanna to mention, I believe Caleb shared with me that some of the surrounding cities are already at five hundred feet. Is that correct, Caleb?
And for the record, Councilwoman Perrow.
Yeah, and this Caleb. So it does vary. There are different, you know, certainly different standards out there in the valley, so not one unified standard. I don't, and I don't know what the most common dimension is either. I, I could relook at some of my notes, but I do, I do not have a solid answer for, again, the most prevalent distance. I will also just say before we move on from this, the neighborhood meeting notice, I would recommend whatever distance we choose for neighborhood, we also, also choose that same distance for the public hearing notice. So it's the same folks that are being invited to the neighborhood meeting are the same folks that are invited to the public hearing with a, with a postcard or letter.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilman Cavanagh.
Caleb, I, I think the, personally, I think the five hundred makes sense. I'll be honest, the idea of kind of tailoring that out depending on land use is intriguing, but I, I too share the concern about consistency. So, well, I think it's, it's a unique idea to explore. I'd be curious what the, the committee's thoughts on that were, but I think trying to keep it as consistent seems to make sense, and, and I like the five hundred number. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Yeah, along those lines, I was giving thought to, to, I definitely like expanding it to five hundred. I was intrigued, like Councilman Cavanagh, about for bigger projects that have a broader impact that go further of maybe expanding that, but that does complicate things, and well, how do you define a big project? So if, if we're to do something like that, I think that would take more research and everything. For our purposes for right now, to help the process, I think five hundred would, would work.
Okay, Caleb, I think you've got general consensus on a five hundred.
Okay, so in the same section of code then, if you look just below, the next section requires that the notice be provided to those folks that are within, going to be within five hundred feet five days prior, or excuse me, fi- five days prior to submittal of an application to city council, or excuse me, to staff. We're proposing to change that to ten days to allow a little more time for collaboration. So if there are some things that come up during the neighborhood meeting, a developer can really consider those, maybe make some changes before they have a deadline to submit to the city their application. So we're, we're proposing to change the far end of that, so you can't have a neighborhood meeting, you know, a year in advance or even more than three months in advance, and no closer than ten days prior to submittal of an application to the city staff. So that's the other code change that we're proposing there. So I'll pause quickly on that one. I, yeah, I'll pause right there.
Mr. Mayor, question for Caleb.
Councilman Hoagland.
Yeah, Caleb, on that, I, I don't mind going to ten days. I think that's a good change. I think elsewhere we talk about having them submit everything to the city five days before the hearing, and if it's ten days out, are we giving them enough time to, to get that submittal in?
So, good question, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hoagland. So that is actually covered in another section. So this, we're still just in the neighborhood meeting portion of this, and, and I've got some process improvement stuff that I'm about, so we're just in the code. But I do have some process and best practices things that I want to propose to you here in just a second, so I'm gonna put a pin in that just for a minute. I'll, I'll double back and I think answer your question.
The minutes won't record a thumbs up, will it? So, okay.
No, but we, if, if there's, if you don't have any questions on the things and you like what's being proposed, a thumbs up would be good, and we can just continue to move on, so.
I will also note then in that section, the, we've had some subsequent discussions since this went to the clerk for printing, and there are two other sections that you don't have before you in this draft, but still under the neighborhood meeting section, eleven-five-A, six-C. What we've added there is the draft subsection that, that requires the developer to hold the neighborhood meeting Monday through Thursday, except for on a holiday with a start time between six and eight P M. And then I'm just gonna add the next one, and that the meeting needs to be held at City Hall or within five miles of the site. So five miles of the site is the big one there. If there isn't a viable option within five miles of the site or on the site, they could certainly have it at City Hall if it's further out in the middle of, you know, virtually nowhere, because there's pretty much opportunities within five miles of everywhere in Meridian these days, but you can't hold the meeting in downtown Boise. You can't hold it in Ontario on a Saturday. So Monday through Thursday, starting between six and eight on nine holiday, non-holidays, and the meeting needs to be held at City Hall or within five, the site or within five miles of the site. So any, any heartburn with either adding those two provisions to where the neighborhood meeting is held.
Caleb, one thing I didn't hear that I thought we talked about, were you going to make it so it had to be indoors?
Yeah, so I, I'm gonna just roll right into the next one, because I don't think probably anybody has any problem with Monday through Thursday. So that is one that, that could potentially be put in code. Right now I have it down as a best practice. So what we've talked about is developing a handout that we can give both to applicants as well as the public. Here's what you can expect at a neighborhood meeting. Here's the best, best practices. Here's what we encourage. Here's what you can expect at a neighborhood meeting. Here's the best, best practices. Here's what we encourage you to do. Now, again, if any of these things you want us to put in the code, I can do that. Uh, and we've toyed with some of them in code to the mayor's point. At one point in time, we had talked about. Putting it within X amount of miles of the site and hold it with indoors. Sometimes, I'll, I'll just be frank, I, I can see some benefits to that, especially if it's January, February and it's inclement weather. And expecting people to come outside for a neighborhood meeting does not sound like fun. Sometimes though, if the weather is nice, walking the site with the developer and understanding things can be beneficial to those neighborhood meetings. So. Again, this kind of F A Q best practices sheet that staff will put together will, will have some of that to say, hey. A best practice is to hold this inside. However, if the weather is allows and it, and it makes sense to hold it outdoors. That's an acceptable practice, but just be warned again, if you held it in February and it's a snowstorm. We're likely gonna make you do that again, because that's not acceptable. You can't expect people to come out in a blizzard to hold your neighborhood meeting. So. Again, that's sort of a best practice, but if we want that in code, I'm, I'm willing to add that. Let me just rattle through that list then for best practices for. Um, neighborhood meetings that we've put together. So request when, when possible to hold it inside. Recording them. So again, this is something we've talked about is recording these meetings. We are not requiring it right now. But we would say that both for the, a developer and a private party. Maybe a good idea to record at least an audio recording of this, so you have some record of this happening and some of that dialogue. Wouldn't be required to be submitted to the city necessarily, but again, just would create a record, another form of a record. And that could be a best practice. Another one would be the city s- uh standardizing a sign in sheet. So when you show up to this neighborhood meeting, it's got a city logo. It says here, again, just a paragraph, as a neighbor, here's what you should expect tonight. From the developer. By signing below does not mean you're consenting to this application, does not mean you're endorsing their project. It just means you were here and participated in the neighborhood meeting. Contact staff with any questions. So again, it's a, it's not just a, you know, piece of notebook paper that says sign here. It's, it's a sheet to sign in that's of the city and we, we re, so we would create that, makes it look a little bit more official in all cases. Another one that we've talked about, and there's a question here. Um, is that invite letter to that neighborhood meeting. I've already reached out to the development community. I've gotten a couple of templates. Um, but we would provide that, that a customizable PDF or document on our website that anybody could go and, and fill in the blanks. You are hereby invited to a neighborhood meeting at X location at certain amount of time to discuss this project. But again, the language is clear, it's concise, it's got information on how to contact the city. More questions sends them to our website with more information. Um, I don't think anybody probably has any heartburn with that. I think that's a good process improvement. I guess the question for you is. Should we send that letter out as the city or should we still have that on the developer? I want to go back to what problem are we trying to solve with these neighborhood meetings? We've got a lot of accusations about I never received the letter. They never showed up to the neighborhood meeting, you know, that when I was at the neighborhood meeting, they didn't have a site plan or whatever those things are. So we get. Some accusations. So we're trying to limit some of the. The flaws that we currently have in that, and that's, that's again, that's one that we get from time to time is I'm within three hundred feet. I didn't get a notice. Well, if, if planning staff did it or the clerk did it and send that note, sends that notice out, we can keep a record of. Who we sent it to doesn't necessarily mean they received it in their hand, but we, we mailed it out to the property owner's address. So. Pros and cons to that, we've kicked that around. So a little feedback on if, if we should leave that wholly in, in the developers' hands, but providing the template letter that they fill in the blanks. Or if we want to own more of the neighborhood meeting process, I guess that's the question at hand.
Mr. Mayor. Good, you can hear me now. Um, so uh we have talked about this quite a bit and, and. I, I would like to share my thoughts and also ask the mayor if he would share his thoughts, because we have different perspectives on it. I feel like that we should leave this um to the developers and not change that, because. I think that the list of addresses that we upload to public record, that the, the city provides the list of addresses. And that should be enough information to show who those letters should have gone to. If the postal service lost it, well, that's. We're not gonna solve anything by the city mailing it versus the developer mailing it. Um, I, I don't, I don't see any, I don't feel like having the developer mail these notices is gonna solve any of the issues that we. Are hearing uh about why people are not getting noticed. I think it's a distance thing and I think it's also a lot of times people think they're within three hundred feet and they're not. So um frequently when um somebody has commented that they did not get noticed, I have gone back and looked at the list of addresses. And they were not on that address because they weren't within the three hundred feet and now the five hundred feet. So we investigate, it seems like we have investigated every time somebody has commented uh on whether they were invited or not. And most of the time it's not a mistake that's made necessarily. So those are my two cents on that. Um, I, I think that's something that. That it, there aren't enough challenges to change the current process, as long as we're providing that template letter for the developer to use. And a list of addresses.
And, and I'll just provide uh the. So when, when I suggested that we have the development community do this, this was when. And I don't know where it stands yet, we haven't gotten there, but if we were gonna take over the signing of the property. Those my recommendation, we just take over all aspects to ensure that those elements are provided. If we are no longer recommending that we sign the property, then we can put that back on the developer. But the one key word that we do not never know, we provide the list of addresses. We have no idea if those are ever actually put in the mail. I'm not saying that they are or they are not. But if we want to ensure that they are mailed, there's only one way to ensure that they're mailed. And that's to have the city do it. Otherwise, we are expecting it, but. Kind of on the larger process, you know, these neighborhood meetings are not required under state code. They are under our code, they are a best practice. So it's really whatever we think we want to be responsible for or the development community to be responsible for. In this context. So I'm not wedded to us doing it, but I think it's the only way to ensure that they actually are mailed into whom. Though, the last thing I'll mention was just on the, Caleb talked about the best practices for the indoor or not. Even in the middle of summer, you have no idea what the weather's gonna be like when you send something out ten days in advance. From the last time I've been at neighborhood meetings um that are outside at six o'clock in the middle of the summer onsite. A, a slight breeze takes things down, you have no, nothing to work upon. It's really a practical, you know, what is practical in terms of expectations? If the developer wants to hold the second one onsite because it makes sense. But if we have had those situations in the past where. A windstorm comes in where it rains on that day. And then are you expecting people to show up in that situation or not? So. Taking the weather out of the equation is why the, I think the indoor has greater value. Than leaving it open as a best practice. But with that now, I'll turn it over, because I see everyone's mics are off. So who would like to go next?
Um, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, the, what I was expecting, Mr. Attorney's.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, one other thing I thought of after Caleb and I talked about this. I agree that sometimes onsite could be really a good thing. But I think you're gonna see more and more issues occasionally where there's no handicap ADA access. For someone to, to participate and go to the meeting, because it's either out in the field. Um, it's an unimproved property. There's no sidewalk, there's no place for them to hear it very well. Uh, they may have hearing issues and things like that. So I, I, whether we put in the code or not, I. It's certainly the council's call, but I think that's an issue you're gonna have occasionally is that. There's no ADA accessible um to an outside venue, especially when you have. Varieties of different types of, of um impairments that might be an impediment to people participating.
Um, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Well, we've got Bill Neri queued up, uh city attorney. I'd like to ask him a question about the audio. If we put that into policy, best practice requiring audio. I, 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 I get, I, I'm, I'm concerned about that, but then we are not requiring them or. Do they have to bring it to the hearing to prove that they answered this question or? Where do we stand from a legal standpoint on, on requiring audio but not utilizing the audio?
Um, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilor Hoagland, and that's, that's exactly been my concern about requiring it to be recorded. I could see it being very messy and, and the common complaint that we see or hear often is. The developer said one thing and he says, no, I didn't. And true, the audio recording might be helpful, but what you will probably get a lot of the times is. It kind of sounds like he's agreeing, it kind of sounds like he was noncommittal. It's gonna be really hard to tell one way or the other. You're gonna stop a hearing in the middle of it and go, let's go to the tape and say, okay, it was an hour long meeting. I think that was about ten minutes in. Let's go to ten minutes. I, I mean, I just think it's gonna get real clunky. I'm also concerned that if you require it. You may not, I, I've been guilty of this, so I will admit I have recorded meetings and did not realize it didn't record till the meeting was over. And then once the meeting's over. I go back and listen to it and it's not there, well, it's kind of done. So now they'd have to do it over. I, I just see more, more problems. I, I think if people want to record the meeting. Most people have the capability to do it themselves. I just don't think it should be required to be done.
And, and just to be clear, we are not putting in that it's being required at this point in time.
Right.
Practice, there is no requirement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and. Even, oh, so, so Bill, are you more comfortable, uh, Mr. Mayor and, and Bill, if uh it's not required, but it is available? So there's, that, that keeps us out of any legal requirement than that they have to bring forth or. Can citizens demand? I mean, I, it's still kind of like, okay, it exists. And are, are we gonna get people demanding that be brought forward because they think the, the developer lied? So.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilor Hoagland, again, I think, I think a best practice is great. I think the direction to the public. That they're also able to record the meeting themselves if they wish. Um, if they're going to be present, they can record it themselves. They can provide that if they wish as part of the record. Um, that's up to them. And I think that again leaves it in the ballpark, because. Uh, uh, as the mayor said earlier, if, if you want to guarantee it, then we have to do it. If, if we're not gonna do it, which I wouldn't recommend us doing that. Um, I think you just leave it as a best practice and, and, and remind the public they have the ability to record it themselves if they want to.
Mr. Mayor, Bill, thank you. That, that makes sense. So I'm good with that.
Mr. Mayor. We, we had had some preliminary conversations about requiring um something be submitted in writing. By the developer um with a list of criteria that, that it be a form. That's completed, that says that they covered a particular set of, of, and you know, they covered a, a specific set of information. So one of the challenges has been that um one, one uh applicant might give a very thorough presentation. At the neighborhood meeting and one might just show up and say that they were there. And so Caleb and I and the mayor of, as well have had conversations about. Are there certain things we really want to see happening? Um, and, and is that something that we ask the developer to put in writing and submit with their application? And I would propose that I would like to see that happen. I'm curious what the other council members think about that.
So, Mr. Mayor, before the rest of council chimes in, thank you, uh, Councilwoman Perro. I want to just put a little bit finer. I didn't expand on that, but kind of this F A Q. Document that we're looking to put out would include that type of information. And on our application checklist, we, we already require a narrative from the applicant. What I envision is expanding that. With a narrative to provide a brief summary of the neighborhood many, meeting and any issues that came up at that meeting. So. Um, that's how we were, again, not a code thing, we wouldn't require it in city code, but in this best practice is. Highly encouraged in your narrative, address your neighborhood meeting, summarize the neighborhood meeting and how that went. And, and, you know, bring us, bring a site plan to your neighborhood meeting, explain, you know, what the project is and, and some basic information. And then again, summarize that, that meeting, how many attended, what were, what were some questions or common themes? So. Um, I just want to put a, I'm sorry I didn't bring that up and kind of that template. But that is another best practice process thing we would expect then the development community do is. Address how their neighborhood meeting went and summarize it.
Mr. Mayor.
Bill, obviously if any council members want to weigh in on these last couple items before we move on.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilman Byrne.
I, I, just going over my notes, um, I'm, I'm, I really like a standardized letter. With expectations of, of the meeting being sent out to those within the five hundred feet. I think the five hundred feet's fine. Um, I really like this idea of a template, uh, best practice that Councilwoman Pro spoke about. Um, going over specific questions and highlights that we as a body and um even P and Z. Uh, would like to see and um. If, if needed. Um, like the idea of a sign in sheet, I think that's, I think that's great. Um, the only, the only thing that, and I've gone back and forth about this. I originally thought that. That recording it would be um necessary in order to prevent the he said, she said thing that we. Run into a lot with, with neighborhood meetings. I, I just can't, I, I just, for some reason, I, I just, we haven't been able to come up with an effective way to do it. So unless we can figure out a way that. That makes sense for the city and those involved and have it be effective, then I, I probably would lean more toward the template. Idea than, than the actual recording, but maybe leave it as a best practice, not forcing them or making them to do it, but. You know. Making it a, a best practice, helping out the decision-making process with, with our body and also planning and zoning.
I think that's where we currently are. Mr. Cavanagh, Mr. Borton, any comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Caleb, on, on the. The sending out the letter question, should we do it? Should the applicant do it? In terms of staff time, do you anticipate if we were the ones to do it or if we offered that? That it's a. I guess. Who does that ultimately fall to staff wise? Does it require a new position? Does it work within somebody else's scope of work? Help me understand that particular piece.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, we, we haven't quite gotten that far, although we have talked to the mayor and you will see in the. I believe in the, the draft twenty-one budget, community development does have a new administrative position where we're seeking. That it has been one of the tasks that we've talked about this person doing. Is sending out these neighborhood meetings, if that is something that the city takes on. So that's sort of already. In the works, if you will. There's still enough for that person to do if we don't send out the letter, so this doesn't, these, you know, hinge on us. Needing that position or not, but that is a duty that we had. Um, if we don't get that position and still want to send out the neighborhood, we, the clerk would kind of, you know, we'd want to talk with the clerk a little bit, because they're probably. We have some maybe administrative capacities, but we work closely with the clerk's office on these, on notices anyways. Um, for the hearing, so it could make some sense to um either take that on from them or have them do the whole thing, not you notice for this and we'll notice for that. So we hadn't, we haven't gotten that far. I guess I'd like to kind of keep the discussion at a higher level. Do we think this is a best practice? I think staff can figure it out and I don't, this isn't gonna validate a new F T E or even a halftime person. I mean, it, it will take some resources. But I think we have the capacity to absorb that and make it happen if it's something we think is in the best interest to take on, because it makes the process better.
Mr. Mayor, follow up if I may?
Yes.
And, and I, I don't know if this is a question for you, Mr. Mayor, for Caleb. Is this a process that staff want to offer? I, I guess that my question is, is this something that we could provide but not require?
Yeah, I, I, I guess from my standpoint, I would argue that it's something we either, you either do or you don't do it. Uh, just from a cost standpoint. In, in theory, if you take this on, you are gonna charge for the cost of, of that part in your fees that you charge. And so rather than having a variable fee for this or that. Um, I would recommend it's, it's, to me, it's really just the question, if it's not important to council that we verify that the letters are sent. I don't think that it's necessary that we do the work. Um, if you want verification that the letters are sent, then we should do the work. So as I, as I've mentioned before. If we were gonna be taking on more and more aspects of this, where we are gonna be the ones that are essentially. Helping make sure that all the postings are done, all the mailings are done. Rather than splitting out, the developer does this and we do this. I was suggesting, let's all do it. Let's either take on more responsibility or leave this responsibility to the developer, not split it where they're gonna take on some and we're gonna take on some. So I, it really kind of to me depends upon what, what happens with the sign postings, where I would actually come out to say we should or shouldn't do this.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may.
Yeah.
And I, and I think that that, I think that's probably the crux of us to where I am at as well. And to me, I would want to hear from. You know, some of our. You know, some of our reoccurring applicants about if. Having the city manage this service is a benefit to them. Um, or or not. To me. I think there's a significant benefit that comes along with saying. Here, city, you go do it. It's a consistent process. It's different with applicant A over applicant B. We provide greater consistency to our community. I also would want to make sure that the cost that we're able to do it is competitive with what they'd be able to do it on their own. So there's, there's still some what ifs for me. But I I do like a. Kind of city led approach um to doing this. I think it does better serve our citizens and provides a a benefit to our applicants as well.
And I think Caleb has heard at least from one person. Only one that I'm aware of on this specific issue. If he wants to bring that up, but. Um, let's go to Councilman Borton if he's got anything he'd like to add before we go back to Caleb.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I'm not so sure. I'm looking, I'm looking for. The problem that that each of these is intended to solve and and. Might need to give it some more thought because I don't know. The the data behind the proposed changes. There's a lot of proposed changes and and. For example, you know, 300 to 500 feet. Do we have folks, you know, 400 feet away that didn't get noticed, but otherwise would get noticed? I mean, why 500? Why not 700? Why not? So I'm trying to understand what are the the known problems that the change is solving because it is. These changes do create um greater expense, greater delay, so the benefit must outweigh it. So. Um, whether we mail versus the applicant mailing, do we have any data that an applicant has? Reported to us that they've mailed stuff and they've lied to the city about it? I'm not, I'm not aware of anything like that. So. And we're probably early in the process, but as part of the discussion and consideration of these. These proposals, I know there's. More discussions, I'm sure to go down the road. Um, I'd look at him with that in mind. What is the the known problem? That this is a solution and the the benefit that these changes create outweigh the cost. Um, I wouldn't want the city to mail anything. I don't know why we would ever mail stuff. In lieu of the developer doing it, um, unless we know there's somebody who's. Provided false information to the city about. Complying with what their obligations are. So um, that's some of the initial mindset. I'm not. Supportive or opposed. Um, as to the audio recording. In a neighborhood meeting, I'm not so. Certain what the purpose of that would be. I don't know what I would do with it if I listen to an audio recording. If there's a disagreement between a developer and a and a citizen as to what was said at a neighborhood meeting. So now what do I do with it? I mean, the the value of of the proposed change, I'm not sure I see. I understand the intent. So. There's probably more work to come and maybe there's data there, but. I I look at changes that create cost or delay. With some. Caution.
Well, I'll turn this back over to to Caleb to provide additional feedback. I think the short answer is. There is no data on any of these things. I think it's what your experience you all have had while sitting at the dais for the last. Three months to. Six plus years. So if you don't think there's issues, you can certainly say. Stop moving forward. But Caleb, any any comments back?
No, that, uh, and Mr. Mayor, that's what I was just going to say. I mean, I I don't have that data because especially as we're talking about neighborhood meetings, this is. On the developer to do that. I don't have, again, we're back to he said, she said, I never received the letter or the notice. We have had from time to time, a neighbor saying, I'm 350 feet away. Why did you only do 300 feet? Well, we're going to have somebody that's 501 feet away saying, why did you pick 500? It's an arbitrary number. But I I'm going off of some of the feedback I've heard. From maybe not so much this council, but previous councils even too to say, you know what, we should look at casting a wider net, including more of the. A wider neighborhood to get in the process. So. I I don't have really any data, but it is just anecdotal stories you hear from somebody in the public coming and saying, your process is flawed. This, you know, I didn't get an invite. I had to talk to my neighbor and that's the only way I knew. And then when I got there, the developer said one thing and submitted something else. And so, you know, it's kind of the mayor's point. I I'm not necessarily advocating for any of these. I'm reacting. I I think. And I'll just be honest. I mean, it's more from the public side of the things, not not from the developers perspective. This is more what I've heard at public hearings from the public saying. Your process is skewed in a developer's favor. You should swing that back to us a little bit. Let us have a fighting chance to have to be part of this process. So. Some of these changes are are doing that, but that is time and money. So. That cost benefit, I can't answer for you either. Um. It it's sort of optics. We're trying to really improve the process, but we're really. Good faith showing we're we're trying to let the public play a bigger role.
Yeah.
And Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Parsons.
I just wanted to piggyback on some of Caleb's comments too. The one thing that staff can't control. Is the change of ownership, the timing for the change of ownership of the property. So. As you know, sometimes we have developers that may continue to own the buildable lots adjacent to a development. And a home is constructed on that site. And that transfer happens at the county. But the time that the developer had their neighborhood meeting and submitted their application, it may have showed the ownership as the developer and not the new owner. And so they were not included in the process because we don't control that. The code actually requires that the notification goes out to the prop. The property owner of record who could either be living here in the community or living in California. So that email. Or that invite could get mailed to someone in California, not even a renter, a landlord, or even the new. Owner who just moved in. So I just wanted to put that in. On your plate too and take that into consideration as we consider these process changes.
So if we just, Mr. Mayor. That would be uh, just to kind of answer, answer, I think, um, and it was Councilman Bortons, I think. That's the only benefit I really see to the city sending out. The the notice is by chance, if ownership changed, we will have the most at. They could get the list of property owners from our administrative assistant 30 days before and then send their letter out. Well, maybe you had a house or two that sold in that time and now I'm sending letters to old addresses. If the city does it. We can pull the addresses right from the county right now. We know exactly who it's going out to. The letters don't sit there for a week or two or three or whatever. But, you know, again, is is that worth us take owning this whole process? I don't, I don't know that it, I'm sure it's happened. Um, but if you ask for the list of neighbors and you don't send that letter for another 30 days. Yeah, you could have, it could be going the wrong address. I do want to, uh, Mr. Mayor, I will move on just a a point of order clarification. I know when we're in City Hall, 5:30 is kind of the breakpoint. I think we're about halfway there. When, and I know you have a six o'clock meeting, what? How much more time do we have today?
Um, are we good to go till 5:45 on these items? Any problems with anybody? Okay, we'll, we'll do a hard stop at 5:45, Caleb.
All right, thank you. Um, so and I think inside, before we leave, I want to talk about the inside neighborhood meeting or not. I heard some. Uh, persuasive, do you want me to put that in code? I guess, can I get a thumbs up? Does the, do we want to see an inside inner code? Have your neighborhood meeting inside, not just a best practice, but we're going to require it be inside.
Code.
Okay, all right. So I'm gonna, but I am going to still put it in the best practices then. I saw more thumbs down than up, so. Um, and this will go to public hearing, so you can change your mind through the process, but at least the draft, um. We're going to just keep it in the the best practices. Um, we'll also um, kind of double back to the mailing and I I think everyone's on the fence, but let's talk about the neighborhood meeting. So that's. Or the the public hearing. So I'm going to move now to pub, the public hearing process. Um, and again, several steps within this, let me run through. Um, so the distance, we're going to do 500. So that's the first section then. Um, I lost the screen. But the the first section, we're going to just match that to be um, 500 feet as well to to send out the notices for. Uh, the public hearing. The big question here is should the city hire a sign company? So we have had, and and again, I'm I'm sorry, I don't have data. But it is frequent and it seems like it's more and more frequent. Applicants are not posting the site in a timely manner. They're forgetting. Whether intentional or not, the sites are not getting posted and therefore you have to continue items. You cannot hear that item. If the site is not um, posted in accordance with our code. So the response we have to that then was, well, the city will hire then a sign company or three, you know, we could do a rotation. And then that the sign posting actually gets done by our contractor. Um, again, they're they're, it's they're humans, there's going to be mistakes too, but you. One would think that they would make less mistakes. It's their job to install signs. So you would think they would do better about putting those signs up and could be a little more reliable. If that problem we're trying to solve is to get the notice on the property. In a timely manner, uh, consistent with our code, we could take that on. I want to put this into perspective though a little bit. Boise has recently gone the other way. So for years and years, they they had assigned companies that they uh. Would hire and pass that those costs on to the development community. They've recently changed it to go back to putting that on their applicants. So we're we're heading in different directions on this one potentially. So the draft code you had before you actually does have um, that in because that's primarily what I've heard from from council is to. We should, we should take this on to make sure it's posted in the right location in a timely manner. Again, no guarantees 100% by everybody. Um, some of the concerns I've heard though from the development community. You know, now, you know, they can blame themselves if the developer forgets, if it's our sign company, now we're liable, we forgot. How does that look? Because time is money. So now it's our contractors, the city's delay. What happens if our contractor hits an irrigation line or a power line on private property? So there's some. Um, concerns with not only damage but costs and uh, you know. Getting on to private property, we could probably get some consent that way, but those are some of the hiccups or problems that. Could arise if the city takes on and owns this. Uh, posting uh, the the sites. Um, we could also. Better ensure quality of the signs. Um, some have been known to to blow over. Um, get kicked down, whatever. We could make sure they're at least securely put on the site. Through our contractor. Um, but that's a big, so I'm going to pause there and just get some direction on what you think about the city. And and I know Mr. Neri has been looking into this too and had some concerns, so I'm going to just pause there.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
I would assume that, you know, there's there's sign companies that post signs. That this is a a business and they have insurance and I would hope and assume that any contract we would create with them. Would would have a hold harmless clause on behalf of the city if. An irrigation line is hit or, you know, um, there's some sort of, if they create some sort of damage, you know. That we would, that the city would be held harmless if the property owner were to sue the sign company. These sign companies do this. They know that they have to be insured. So I'm not sure what Mr. Neri found out, but I I guess I'm not maybe as afraid of that as. As. Um, as the public testimony we received, but I welcome any thoughts.
Mr. Neri.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Pearl. I I would agree, we would probably create an agreement that would. Hold the city harmless, but we would get a consent from the applicant. I I do agree with Caleb, though, that some of the concerns are going to be on very large parcels that you're going to be outposting. In the area that may be unimproved, it may not have a road there to access, maybe problematic. Um, you know, right now it's on the developer and and who he contracts with. To make sure they're there and whether they damaged something that's between them. And their contractor, so. And the other one that Caleb raised, which I don't know the level of liability it would cause yet. But if if the if the error is by the city's contractor. Whether or not we have any liability towards that delay. In the Idaho code, the city i- is exempted from. That for some reasonable, as long as we took reasonable care. I don't know how far that would extend to contractors. So there may be problems there. I just. Said very few people do this, so I don't have any real data to show that. It's not a huge risk or it is a big risk. I I'd be curious to know why Boise. Either way, my guess is their development is so rapid and their city is so large, it may be problematic for them to keep up too. But but I don't know the reason for why they changed, so. Probably could, we could probably contract around some of those concerns, but I'm not sure we could contract around all of them.
It's all, I'll just add, kind of goes back into my, into my two cents on this topic. To me, a newspaper posting, uh, posting the sign, notifying people about public hearings and neighborhood meetings. They're all required either under state law or under our code. Um, I'm fine with the city taking on any and all responsibilities. But this is where I, where I kind of come into like. Well, let's either do it all. Or not do it all, not pick and choose which ones we think. We should be responsible for because they're all required to the same level. In our code in some fashion. That's my, that's, that's all my opinion is on this on either way, but. All of them are, all of them have value. One way or the other.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden.
Uh, one of the benefits that I thought of that uh, it drives me nuts is by having a contractor do it. We not only control that process of posting, but it's also taking down the stupid signs when the hearing's over. We don't need the signs anymore. We can have, some of those signs are up there a very long time. It's just kind of. It it's a nuisance, but that was just kind of an aside. I I like the idea of taking over the sign, uh, that can be built into the cost of the the. The fees that developers pay and it's out there, you know, it's done and uh. Uh, it's, it's very visible too.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
Uh, Caleb, you had both a yellow and a red. Um, coloration marked on this, so can you explain the timing? Are there two different uh, times that you would would address? The the five different um, or four different changes in this code? Is that why?
No, thank you, Councilwoman Pearl. I guess the the question really is kind of to the other questions that were brought up. Is this something we think is a problem that we want to solve right now? Should I get to work with finance on sending out an RFP? Or an RFQ to look at bringing this in-house? Or do we want to talk about it some more? Make sure it's the right thing for our city? And then potentially do it in round two of of these UDC changes that that come along in the fall, rather than pushing it through right now. Do we want to, do we want to think about it? So the yellow is round one. Red is round two. This one is is marginal to me. If everyone's saying, or a majority of you are saying. We want to take on sign posting. I will work with finance. We'll get this going right now. We'll have it in this first round for spring. If if there's enough question in your mind, you're not quite sure. Let's get some of those questions answered. Let's, let's talk more with Boise and the development community and make sure this is the right thing for the city to take on. So that's why it's kind of half yellow, half red. I need that direction from you. Is this something you all feel strongly about? And want to do right now? Or should we, you want to kick it around a little bit more?
Mr. Mayor, a follow up?
Yep.
Uh, I think that we should take as long as we need to take to investigate the any legal concerns. I I don't feel like this is something that's an emergency. And I don't, uh, it's, I don't feel like it's enough of a problem for us to ru- rush through the process of. This is significant because it's going to require additional costs to be paid by the applicant and I want to make sure that we really want to do this. Before we start down that road. I don't. And that's my thought on it. I am very much in favor of doing it, but I'd like to really make sure we investigate it thoroughly.
Anyone else on that? Is that good? Keep on the list for potentially have the UDC work group. Kick that around a little bit more. Okay. I didn't see a whole bunch of thumb. Okay, I'm going to move on then. Um.
Caleb, real quick, um, I've not seen the proposed agenda for next week's workshop. Uh, I know one item that will be coming forward. My intention is, since we're not going to get through this and this. Haven't even got to the big items yet to ask Caleb to come back next week. To to maybe move forward to the next item. Um, I I don't know if you are going directly towards. When we start the process, but I think that's a larger one that we don't want to probably open up that can to get through right now.
Okay.
If that, if that was the last one you have on your list.
I I'll just, I'll, I will just tell you the last two that I had was scheduling projects for hearing. And uh, receiving testimony. So. Those are, those are loaded questions. So next week, if you have on the, I don't know if the clerk. I don't know if the clerk is, is available to tell us what you have on your workshop next week, but I.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burr.
We have, uh, I'm looking at the, uh, agenda for, for next week, and we have a couple of, um, annual reports. Um, and that is the extent.
Okay.
We have information technology and we have the city clerk annual report scheduled for next week.
Okay. Um, I, I think that we can work with them and if we got to move one off to the following week, but both of those topics are probably rather large. So I, I would just suggest we stop now and then bring it back next week to continue.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Council, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burr.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogland.
I second.
I have a motion, a second to adjourn. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, I'll just endeavor to say my advice, say nay.
Aye.
Suppose they, we are adjourned and we'll start at six o'clock for the regular public hearing meeting.
Do we have to, do we have to click out of this? Or can we just leave it going?
You can leave it going. I'm going to mute everybody because the YouTube stream will continue. So we don't have to.
Good, thanks.
Good. Speaking of the mayor.
Chris, are we ready?
Oh, boy, I'm glad I didn't say anything bad about him a moment ago.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, before we start.
Yes.
Pastor Moore, are you, are you there?
Yes, I am.
If you don't mind, when you say your invocation, if you could keep one of our fellow council members in your prayers, Councilwoman Strater, her, her father-in-law passed away recently and so if you could just mention that your invocation, we'd, we'd really appreciate it.
I sure will. I, I got that message from Chris. Are you Chris?
I am here and yes, yes, I did get that to you and Mr. Mayor, we are ready.
Okay, well. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. For the record, it is Tuesday, April fourteenth, twenty twenty at six oh three P M. We'll begin this meeting with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh. Councilman Cavanagh not here?
He's here.
He's here. I can't hear him. Oh, you're on mute, sir.
Can you hear me now? Sorry.
Thank you, sir.
Here.
Councilwoman Perot, here. Councilman Hogland.
Here.
Councilmember Burnt.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here.
Thank you. Absent is Councilwoman Strater.
Okay, item two is Pledge of Allegiance. Let's see how this goes.
Pledge of Allegiance, there we go.
I pledge allegiance. Flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic. For which it stands, one nation under God. Invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Record for that. Up on the screen. We'll now turn it over to item number three, our community invocation with more of Ten Mile Christian Church.
Let's bow our heads. God in heaven, we have just acknowledged that we are a community that is under your providence. And I am grateful that I'm a part of a community that pauses when we do business to recognize that you're the true leader of our world and of our universe, and we praise you for that. We've just come through the, the journey to the cross and we found the empty tomb and that in these circumstances this year has impacted our lives in new and additional ways. I pray that the lessons we're learning as we're working together as a community to, to stop something that's, that's really destructive. I pray that we'll keep that lesson and we'll retrieve that lesson of how well our community can work together. I pray that that spirit will be over this very council meeting that tonight that there'll just be a camaraderie and a, and a unity among our council and our mayor as they make decisions that are in the best interests of our community. We pray for, for that direction and for your protection. God. Particularly, we're missing one of our council members here tonight, Liz Strater, and I pray for, for her family and the loss of her father-in-law and we pray that this, this time when it's so hard to deal with things that even the loss of life and that your, your care will be with them, your spirit will bring them comfort and just that you would be with them in this hour. God, while we're making requests, I, I both make requests and express gratitude for those in the medical community that are serving us and putting their lives in, in, in a difficult situation and there's so many emotions besides the physical in their, in their needs. I, I pray God also for first responders and for people involved in businesses that are providing us food and those sort of services that we all need, that you would protect them, give them special wisdom. I pray for our community that we would follow the leadership of our mayor and our council and just keeping a healthy community the best we can. We pray for your intervention and that our world would would just move to a place that's safe again. We pray that this virus could be, could be stopped swiftly. Be with those especially that have been affected financially, that their lives are upside down because of this. May we be neighbors to them in this season as well and come alongside them. God, we're grateful for your gift of love in Jesus Christ and in his name I pray amen.
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 Thank you, Pastor Moore. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Pastor Moore.
Thank you, you guys.
Good to see you.
You betcha. God bless you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number three, I'm sorry, item number four is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
Let me get to my notes here. Um. I'm moved, there, there's gonna be some changes to the agenda this evening, this regular meeting. We're going to item six F and six G have requested to be continued to April twenty eighth. And item, item six K has requested to be continued to May nineteenth. With those changes, I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Mr. Mayor.
That's what I hope.
I second the adoption of the agenda as amended.
Okay, I have a motion second to approve the adoption of the agenda as amended. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Okay, so next item we have on the agenda, item, item five A is a proclamation for the week of the young child. So I do have a, I just kind of do it. We'll pretend like I'm down, turn around the, the podium for this proclamation. But we are joined by Beth Oppenheimer who's here to represent the week of the young child. So I'm gonna go ahead and read this proclamation and then ask Beth for any comments she, that she'd like to make after the reading. Whereas the city of Meridian, in conjunction with the Idaho Association for the Education of Young Children and the National Association for the Education of Young Children are celebrating the week of the child of the young, the week of the young child and whereas these organizations are working to promote and inspire high-quality early childhood experiences for our state's youngest citizens that can provide a foundation of learning and success for children in Meridian. And whereas teachers and others who work with or on behalf of young children from birth through age eight make a difference in the lives and deserve thanks and recognition. And whereas public policy supporting early learning for all are crucial to young children's futures and to the prosperity of our society. And whereas this is a time to recognize the importance of children's earliest years in shaping their development and to recommit ourselves to ensuring that each and every child experiences a type of environment at home, at childcare, at school, and in the community that will promote early learning. Therefore, I Mayor Robert E. Simison proclaim April eleventh through seventeen twenty twenty to be the week of the young child in the city of Meridian and encourage all citizens to work and support the efforts of Idaho A E Y S and N A E Y C and invest in early childhood in our community. Then this fourteenth day of April twenty twenty. So Beth, thank you for giving me the opportunity to present this and would invite you to make any comments.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I really appreciate you taking the time to issue a proclamation for week of the young child. It's interesting this time, it, this is an annual celebration that recognizes across the country our youngest children and especially those who work with and care for our youngest children, including parents and grandparents and family members, childcare providers and, and everyone who joins together to support our youngest children. And interesting that it happens to fall during this time. And I hope that we can all take an opportunity, especially those childcare providers who have remained open to serve families of our essential workers during this time. And, and I think it's important to remember that our childcare providers are also essential workers, especially as they're caring for the young children that are keeping, trying to keep our families healthy and safe as well. Real quickly, I just wanted to say another thing about week of the young child. All this week, there's a theme every week or every day of this week. Yesterday was Music Monday, and that's an opportunity to promote music and young children and whether that's singing a song or, or playing some instrument or something like that, encouraging folks to participate in music. Today is Tasty Tuesday, and I've heard lots of great stories of families and caregivers cooking with their young children. It's a great way to incorporate early math skills with our young children. Tomorrow's Work Together Wednesday. So we'll be promoting some activities that, that everybody can join in and work together. It's a little bit different now that we're doing it virtually, but but we're still doing everything we can in, in our communities across the state to work together. Thursday is Artsy Thursday, so we're promoting art activities with young children. And then we finish the Week with Family Friday. And we all know we're spending a lot of time with our families right now. And so Friday, really good time to reflect on the importance of family and the importance of supporting all of our young children. So thank you again for issuing the proclamation. I believe at this point we have twenty-five cities across the state who have issued proclamations and we're so thankful. Idaho has the most cities and communities throughout the country that are issuing proclamations, and I'm so happy that the city of Meridian has been on this. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Beth. Appreciate it very much. Counsel, any, any comments you'd like to make? Okay.
Thanks, Beth.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Moving on to item six A. Counsel, the item you have before you is appointment of two individuals, Lizzie Taylor and Jennifer Cavanagh Williams. Arts Commission. I was able to sit down with Leslie Mulden and these two individuals prior to the COVID outbreak, but the appointment got a little waylaid as we were focused on some other items. I think that these two individuals and, and our conversation with Leslie will bring some good additional viewpoints to the commission. Both of them have artists genes that they are both actively part of that, but they also bring a, a business sense to it with the loss of Gretchen Casarotti off of the Arts Commission. Having, having someone that really is also focused on the, the ins and outs of what needs to occur in terms of events and activities and looking at things in a different perspective. I think that does something especially that Jennifer brings to the commission with, with her background and her perspective. But I, I'm excited to nominate these two, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions. Okay. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
I move that we approve resolution number twenty dash two-two-zero-one. Appointing Elizabeth Lizzie Taylor to seat one and Jennifer Cavanagh Williams to seat seven of the Meridian Arts Commission.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to prove resolution number twenty dash twenty-two oh one. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. And I do see that we have Jennifer joining us. I would see if she has any comments that she would like to make at this point in time now that she's been appointed.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I just want to say thank you for this opportunity. I'm really looking forward to serving in this capacity.
Excellent. All right. Well, thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate you being here. Remotely. Do it all. Okay, and I, I did not see the, on the line in the audience. So with that, we'll move on to item six B, resolution number twenty dash twenty-two oh two. Appointing Jared Smith to seat seven of the Meridian Transportation Commission. We had two great applicants for this seat. Jared brought a, a different, I think the other applicant was someone that was much more into, he was a traffic engineer by by their profession, and we already have quite a few traffic engineers currently on the Transportation Commission. So Jared brought a little bit more of just a regular everyday perspective. He's new to the community and is looking to get involved in transportation issues and just really a passion for serving, the passion for the community and wanting to be involved and, and the interest in transportation. So I, I did reach out to the other applicant and told them to encourage to continue to apply, and he said that he would, especially when we had someone that currently has traffic engineering experience, maybe steps off the commission. So I'd like to recommend that we appoint Jared to the commission.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I don't know if anyone has, has any comments. I'll just, another opportunity to speak so highly of our Transportation Commission, and your point is well heard. We've got a lot of great engineers, but I'm really excited about this proposed appointee. And if nobody has any questions or comments, I'd be happy to make a motion. Go for it. Mr. Mayor, I move we approve resolution number twenty dash two-two-zero-two. Appointing Jared Smith to seat seven of the Meridian Transportation Commission.
Second. Motion in a second to appoint Jared Smith to the Meridian Transportation Commission. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. And I do not see Jared in the queue. So with that, we will move on to item six C.
Mr. Mayor.
I.
This is Chris. Before you go to that, we've had several people raising their hands. I didn't know if you had a moment to talk about how the process will work this evening? Sure. Public hearings.
Are they asking questions specifically to that, do we think?
I am not sure. I can only, I can only allow them to talk.
You have the question function enabled that they can submit questions to you?
We do not have the Q and A for this.
Okay, well, then I guess if council is a medium ball, we can open it up to see the one question that's someone is asking.
Mr. Mayor. Go loop, go ahead, loop.
I, I assume we're gonna say the same thing. With this new approach, I'm all about, at least if, if the public has questions, want to get some clarification on the process. I, I think, Mr. Mayor, you'll do a good job of letting the public know. This is an opportunity to testify, but just to ask questions from a process standpoint, and I'm supportive.
Okay. All right, Chris, if you want to open it up to, for Mr. Benford, so we can see what question he has. Mr. Benford, what, what question do you have?
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Yeah, my only question was, there was an earlier move to move out some of the agenda items, and I wasn't sure which of those. It was pretty quick. Um, so I, I'd like to understand which ones were actually pushed.
Trey, can you repeat that?
Sure.
In, in specific, I'm after the Bannock Ridge. What is it, six J?
Sure.
Was that, was that part of the original push?
So, Mr. Benford, thank you for your question. The Bannock Ridge item is still on the agenda for this evening. We requested to continue the item six F and six G that have to do with our community development block grant, block grant. item six F and six G that have to do with our Community Development Block Grant Program. And also, item six K was continued until May nineteenth. That was for a public hearing for Andorra Senior Living.
Okay. It was just kind of, it was just kind of quick through through those extensions. And we were just trying to follow up with agenda and what that meant to us.
I appreciate it. It's my fault. I should have been more clear.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank, thank you. And Chris, you'll just have to, I'm, I'll trust that you'll notify us if there's other questions that pop up from the, from the community. So with that, we'll move to item six C. Mr. Neri, is there something you'd like to speak to?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For the public's benefit, this is an extension of the emergency declaration that was done thirty days ago. It expires this Thursday. So this will extend that time period for any necessity, necessities, and whether it be procurement or some other actions that the the mayor may need to take while this governor's orders both in effect as well as what might come next. So this is just a continuation. It's required by code to come back to you within the thirty-day time period for an additional extension. So that's what it is.
Thank you, Bill. Counsel, do you have any questions? Okay, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
I move that we approve Resolution number two-zero-two-two-zero-three, a resolution authorizing the continuance of a local disaster emergency declaration in items for an additional thirty days.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hovland.
I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution number twenty-two-zero-three. Eric's twenty-two-zero-three. Are there any discussion on the motion? If not. Councilmember.
Just echo what was stated last, last time when we made this motion from Councilman Cavanagh. Just know that I think we're, I think I can speak on behalf of council. I think you've done a phenomenal job in in leading our city during this, 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 this trying time period. And I also wanted to reach out and say thank you to staff who have supported you in your efforts as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. And as I've said, it told many other people, it makes it real easy to do your job when you got a great team. I, if if there's no further discussion on the motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Item six D is a public hearing on the proposed twenty-twenty summer fee schedule of the Meridian Parks and Recreation Department. It looks like I will turn this over to Garrett.
Okay. Can you guys hear me all right?
Yep.
Right on. Well, thank you guys very much for having me tonight. Before you is the Summer Twenty-Twenty Program Fee Proposals and Schedule. The class fees listed are fees set by instructors per our contract with them. And all internal recreation program fees are set to cover all direct costs of the program. Really, with that, I'll stand with any questions anybody might have.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I think you're muted, but I think you're giving mediocre to go ahead.
Councilman Cavanagh, yep.
Garrett, appreciate you bringing this each time. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but can you just give counsel and the public an understanding about what happens in terms of classes and programs that we're offering if they have to be canceled because of continuing statewide orders?
Sure, sure. Right now, we're just kind of taking it almost day by day, just like everybody else is. Really, it comes to, you know, the size of the class comes into into play, what the governor's order is, what our city stance is on all this COVID-nineteen concerns. Right now, we have been refunding some classes if they have been canceled due to the COVID-nineteen. And we're basically postponing or extending some of the the programs if need be, like softball or volleyball and things like that. And then on top of that, with the classes and stuff with our instructors, we're communicating with instructors and trying to make things work the best we can. But the reality of this, we're postponing things and or ultimately, if we have to cancel, we refund fees. I hope that answers that question.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, a follow-up, though, if I may?
Councilman Cavanagh.
Garrett, can you share with us, you know, we've had a lot of conversations as a council about full, partial, no cost recovery. Where do these classes fall? Are they a full cost recovery? Are they a partial cost recovery? Help me understand that.
Sure. So right now, our contract constructors are on an eighty-twenty split. So they get eighty percent of the fees and we get twenty percent of the fees. And the twenty percent helps cover the administrative costs for our youth programs that we run internally, such as like summer camp and things like that. The program fees cover those costs with a ten percent administrative cost built into that program fee as well. For the adult sports program, it's a twenty percent admin cost compared to the ten percent with the youth. And all the program fees cover all the direct costs of that. So like with the summer camp, for example, all the direct costs include our seasonal staff, transportation, or field trips, or arts and crafts supplies, things like that. So all those, that that cost recovery model was adopted in our Park Master Plan update that we did. I want to say it was late December, January of fifteen, sixteen, something like that. But that that's kind of how our cost recovery model currently works.
Mr. Mayor, a follow-up, then.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Garrett, is it possible, then, that some of our classes were not recovering the full cost to operate it? I know that the twenty percent administrative costs, but say, for instance, I don't know, the adult flag football or, I know, ballet three, where it's a twenty percent, are we confident that that we're recovering the total cost to operate that program and the overhead maintenance of our buildings, facilities, et cetera?
Councilman Cavanagh, good question. So we look at each one of our programs with a different or a separate budget per program. And that's kind of how we come up with our fees. So in that, in that budget, I know when I was doing adult sports states such as flag football, we added every kind of cost we could think of when it came to the cost of flights. If we'd liked to line paint to the flags, to the pylons, to the cones, and everything we could think of that cover all those direct costs for that. So to answer your question, each of those either break even, that include the twenty percent admin cost and or, you know, make a little bit of money based on if we have higher numbers than projected.
Mr. Mayor, one more, if I may.
Yes, and I'd be happy to get rid of your question if you'd like to.
No, I don't think there is a reason to question. I just, I want to make sure that I'm I'm hearing you correctly. Is the, the, the cost of the class covers all of the hard costs, facilities, equipment, officials, et cetera, and then on top of that, a twenty percent to cover the cost of staff that manage the program? Is that correct?
Correct. If I'm understanding you correctly, correct.
Good.
Yeah, but I would point out that I don't think it covers the the cost of what it takes to operate the home court to run a program within it or all the one hundred percent of the administrative costs of our Parks and Recreation Department. There is a certain cost recovery, but it's not going to be one hundred percent of all costs to pay for every aspect of the recreational programs we do.
Mr. Mayor, that that is correct. Yeah, the home court is kind of its own animal.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Are there any other questions for Garrett at this point in time? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hovland.
This is a public hearing, and I just wanted to check with Chris if there's anybody in the queue for this.
Thank you very much for helping me get back into the public hearing mode. Yes, is there anybody that were in the queue or that would like to provide public testimony? And Chris, I think that we probably have provided some information to people, but I assume we would ask people to raise their hand if they would like to provide testimony. Is that their direction we are giving people at this point in time?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have asked people to sign up in advance and have that on our website. Adrian will call those who have signed up in advance, and then you can move to others who would like, and I'll unmute those at that time. But there were no signups in advance for this topic. And currently, nobody reading, currently, nobody is raising their hand.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, I don't know how long we want to pause for anybody to raise their hand.
And technically, I'm, Bill, I'm going to ask the question, I don't know that I technically opened the public hearing in this process. So why, why we do that, why don't I open the public hearing on the proposed twenty-twenty summer fee schedule of the Meridian Parks and Recreation Department and see if there's any additional comments or public testimony at this point in time? If not, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hovland.
I move that we close the public hearing on the proposed twenty-twenty summer fee schedule for Meridian Parks and Recreation Department.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing on the proposed twenty-twenty summer fee schedule of the Meridian Parks and Recreation Department. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay? The ayes have it? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hovland.
I move we adopt Resolution number twenty-two-one-ninety-two, which adopts the Summer Twenty-Twenty Fee Schedule for the Meridian Parks and Recreation Department.
And that's item E on the agenda? Correct, Mr. Neri?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution number twenty-two-one-ninety-two. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, the court will call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Perrow.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
Burnt. Councilman Burnt, you're muted.
All right, sorry.
Thank you.
All right. All ayes, motion passes five to zero. Thank you very much, Garrett. Appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Garrett.
So item six F and G have been moved. So we are to item H, Public Hearing for Blue Valley Elementary School, age twenty-twenty-zero-two-three. I will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Mr. Mayor. You have to make a motion to move items F and G. I think the only thing was, it was noticed at the beginning that that was going to be done.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Bill. Do I have a motion to move items F and G?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
I move that we move items six F and G that's been requested to to be continued to April twenty-eighth.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second to move items F and G to April twenty. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Okay, now we will open up item six H, a public hearing for Blue Valley Elementary School, age twenty-twenty-zero-two-three, with staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The first application before you tonight is a request for a vacation. It's actually a modification to a plat note for South Ridge subdivision number one. This site is located on the west side of South Linder Road, just south of West Overland Road. The final plat was approved by city council back in two thousand and eight. The applicant proposes to amend plat note number seventeen on the recorded plat for South Ridge subdivision number one, which prohibits direct lot or parcel access to South Spanish Fork Way to allow an exception for lot two, block two, to have two accesses for the proposed elementary school. The two accesses are proposed to accommodate an ingress egress for school buses and parent pickup drop-off lanes. The proposed change to the plat note would still restrict access to the Collector Street for other lots in the subdivision. The final plat approved by council in two thousand and eight did not include a note prohibiting direct lot access to South Spanish Fork Way, Collector Street. Note sixteen on the plat stated, direct lock or, excuse me, direct lot access to South Linder Road and West Overland Road is prohibited. Prior to ACHD signing the plat, they required the applicant to modify the note to add a restriction prohibiting direct lock access to South Spanish Fork Way. Even though the city didn't require the restriction because it is on the plat, the Ada County Surveyor requested city council, along with ACHD, approve the proposed modification prior to removal of the note from the plat. A traffic impact study was submitted to ACHD for review with the request for modification to the plat note. Although ACHD policy does not allow the proposed accesses, staff recommended a modification to policy to allow only one driveway onto Spanish Fork Way, four hundred feet north of the roundabout. Only the northern access for school buses and staff was approved due to the following reasons. There wasn't sufficient justification in the traffic impact study for two driveways. The southern driveway is proposed to be located on the departing leg of the roundabout, and drivers are typically accelerating as they exit and are not prepared to stop. The southern driveway doesn't meet district policy for ride-in, ride-out-only driveways to be offset at least two hundred and twenty feet from a signalized intersection. And lastly, the southern driveway doesn't meet district policy for the driveway to be offset two hundred and forty-five feet from the north driveway. The applicant submitted a response to the staff report. In agreement, staffs recommended change to the plat note and the single access via South Spanish Fork Way. A revised site plan was submitted depicting the access approved by ACHD as shown. No other written testimony was submitted. Staff is recommending approval of their quest as follows. Plat note seventeen should read, direct lock or parcel access to West Overland Road, South Linder Road, and South Spanish Fork Way is prohibited, except for lot two, block two, consistent with ACHD's action on the matter per the revised site plan. Staff will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Sonya. Counsel, any questions for staff at this point in time? Okay, then I'll ask the applicant to please unmute themselves. I assume this is Mr. Russell, but please, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Doug Russell. I'm with the Land Group, four-six-two East Shore Drive in Eagle, Idaho, and I'm representing the West Ada School District on this project this evening. I think that Sonya summed things up pretty well, and I have nothing further to add, but I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have for me tonight.
Counsel, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Thank you, Mr. Russell, for being with us this evening. Does this significantly change the flow of how parents or family members and buses will drop off and pick up students?
Counsel member Perrow, we do, we, we had originally desired to have a parent egress lane onto Spanish Fork Way. However, ACHD was adamantly opposed to two accesses on the Spanish Fork Lane. We do feel that that would have made things work maybe a little more smoothly. That said, the main focus in this site plan is to have parent pickup and drop-off separated from the bus lane, which we were able to achieve. And so we do feel confident that this, that this site plan is going to work well. We kind of, I guess, went for the fence and then the first go-around and ACHD just couldn't come to terms with that due to the close proximity of the roundabout. So we, we settled on this site plan. We have ran this by the West Ada School District's busing professionals, and they are comfortable with it. And so we do feel like it is, it is going to function well without that access.
Thank you. Any additional questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Russell, not, I guess, a question necessarily pertaining specifically to the project, but maybe just some insight from you. As I understand, this school was supposed to be built based upon successful passage of a bond the West Ada was going to run this spring. I understand they've delayed that. Do you know, has that impacted any communication they've had with you about delaying? I understand they've delayed that, do you know, has that impacted any communication they've had with you about delaying the construction of this project? And if so, when do they anticipate building it?
Counsel member Cavanagh, I do not have the exact answer to your question as to when they plan to build this school. I do have some basic information in regard to the bond. My understanding is there was concerns about participation in light of recent current events. And so, therefore, that has been postponed. I could not tell you when they're planning to carry that bond forward and start construction on this project, but I can tell you that they have directed us to continue moving forward with our design. And we are, we're beyond 90% completion with construction documents, and we plan to wrap these up fairly soon. So, my guess is they're gonna put these on the shelf very close at hand, and as soon as they feel like they can get this bond passed, they will move forward immediately. I do know that this is an important school for the district.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, this is a public hearing. Chris, did we have, or Adrian, did we have anyone who signed up in advance?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, one person, Sean Connor.
Okay. Is Mr. Connor with us in the system? I do see Sean, who's an attendee.
Mr. Mayor, he has permission to speak in the system if he'd like.
Yes. While we're getting this put in place, just a reminder that after the staff prevents the background information, the applicants have up to 15 minutes. Public testimony, each person is given up to three minutes to testify. And then the applicant will have the final comments following all public testimony. And with that, we will, just information for all these public hearings as we move forward. So, no one would like to testify on this item? Is that your confirmation, Chris?
I just spoke into a muted microphone, my apologies, Mr. Mayor. He is unmuted and able to speak, but I not gotten a response.
You have not got a response from him yet?
That is correct.
Mr. Mayor, this is Doug Russell again, if I may, if it's Sean Connor that's on the list, I had no way would want to inhibit him from speaking, but I would just like to clarify that he is with my office and working on this project with me. Unless he has something he wants to add in the way of a public member. I think as far as representation for West Ada, we're okay. That's all I'll say on that matter.
Okay. Well, since we've not gotten any response, I guess I'll turn this over to council if they feel comfortable with that information about if they'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
I move that we approve the Blue Valley Elementary School, Application H 2020-0023, to vacate the plat note for South Ridge Sub number one.
You need to close the public hearing first.
Oh. My apologies. Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
I move that we close the public hearing for Blue Valley Elementary School, H 2020-0023.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, saying a bye-bye by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed nay? The ayes have it?
Would you like me to try that again?
Absolutely. Councilwoman Perrow.
I move that we approve the, that application for the vacation of a plat note for South Ridge Sub number one on application 2020-0023 for Blue Valley Elementary School.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 20H 2020-0023, is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all the, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton?
Aye.
Cavanagh?
Aye.
Perrow?
Aye.
Hoagland?
Aye.
Burnt?
I, I saw an aye, but I didn't hear it because your mic is muted.
Sorry, I, gosh dang, I apologize, I.
All ayes, motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to item 6I, Public Hearing for Idaho Central Credit Union, H 2020-0016. I'll open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The next application before you is a request for a modification to the existing development agreement. This site consists of 2.03 acres of land, its own CG, and located at 3152 West Peak Cloud Lane at the southeast corner of West Franklin Road and South Ten Mile Road. A development agreement exists for this site that has been amended a couple of times previously. The applicant proposes a modification to the existing agreement to update the conceptual development plan for the site to allow for the development of a financial institution with a drive-through for Idaho Central Credit Union. The existing concept plan depicts building footprints for three separate structures on lots nine through 11, Block 2, TM Creek subdivision number two. Structures are depicted abutting the adjacent street buffers along Ten Mile and Franklin Roads to the north and west, and the drive aisle along the south boundary with parking internal to the site. A single driveway for a drive-through is depicted on the north and west sides of the building at the corner of Franklin and Ten Mile Roads. The applicant intends to combine the three lots into one parcel through a subsequent property boundary adjustment application and construct one 5,672 square foot, single-story structure with five drive-through lanes on the north side of the building adjacent to the street buffer along Franklin Road, with an exit driveway along the west side of the building adjacent to the street buffer along Ten Mile Road, and parking to the south and east of the structure. The development agreement states that most buildings along South Ten Mile Road should address the street by being built to the street buffer in accord with the Ten Mile interchange specific area plan. This provision is especially important as this site is situated at the corner of two major access thoroughfares, Franklin and Ten Mile Roads, and is highly visible from these roadways. The proposed building is not planned to be built to the street buffer as desired, and the five drive-through lanes will be highly visible from Franklin Road, directly conflicting with the intent of the aforementioned development agreement provision. An agreement also requires all future development to be consistent with the design elements contained in the Ten Mile Plan, the design standards listed in the UDC 113A19, and the design guidelines in the Meridian Design Manual, which has been replaced by the Architectural Standards Manual. The following are goals and design elements in the Ten Mile Plan that are applicable to the proposed development, along with staff's comments in regard to consistency with these elements. First, traditional neighborhood design concepts with a strong pedestrian-oriented focus are essential. The proposed drive-through use and design with five drive-through lanes is extremely vehicular-focused and not pedestrian as desired. Street-oriented design is critical in urban environments, and especially at a gateway to the Ten Mile area such as this. Buildings should be at or close to the property line, creating a consistent edge to the public space and making streets more friendly and walkable. The proposed structure is separated by five drive-through lanes on the north side of the building adjacent to Franklin, and one driveway on the west side of the building adjacent to Ten Mile. All new commercial buildings should have continuous unbroken frontage along required build-two lines to a minimum height of 30 feet or at least 75% of the property frontage. The proposed building height is only 22 feet. Most of the existing structures in the overall development so far are built to the frontage. Furthermore, the proposed building and site design lack any gateway features or enhanced integration with the overall site and district, despite the prominent corner visibility. New buildings at street intersections should hold the corners and avoid additional building setbacks unless a new public space is specified. The proposed building is set a substantial distance away from the intersection and is separated by a major vehicular-oriented the drive-through lanes, no public spaces are proposed. At least 40% of the linear dimension of the street level of frontage shall be in windows or doorways. While the west elevation is consistent with this design element, the north elevation has no windows or doorways. The goal in these areas is to achieve a floor area ratio of 1 to 1.25 or more. The proposed development has a FAR of .06, which is .94 under the minimum desired. In order to achieve this goal and recognizing the site limitations with the Ten Mile Creek, buildings must be multi-story or make heavy use of shared parking areas, and with less vehicular-oriented design. Multi-story examples at other banks that would be in closer alignment with the FAR goals exist at the northeast corner of Fairview and Eagle, and on the southeast corner of Eagle and Overland. So far, this area is not developing consistent with the floor area ratio goal in the plan. Building height should be two to four stories over much of the area with opportunities for taller buildings in a few locations. The proposed building is only a single story in height. So far, the TM Creek commercial use area has only developed with single-story buildings. The future commercial buildings to the east in the TN-C district are required by the development agreement to be a minimum of two stories in height. Four-story apartment buildings have been constructed to the east and south within the TM Creek area. Single-story structures surrounded by surface parking and drive-iles make it difficult for the plan to ever meet the unique destination elements of the plan that would draw and support broader demographic diversity important to many employers in this area. The following are design elements in the UDC 113A19 that are applicable to the proposed development. Site design: For lots with frontage on a public street, a minimum of 40% of the buildable frontage of the property shall be occupied by building facades and/or public space. Within mixed-use areas such as this, buildings may be placed away from roadways if a minimum of 30% of the building frontage is occupied by building facades and/or public space. The building is proposed to be located away from the adjacent roadways. There are no buildings or public space along the frontage of this property. However, there are buildings along the buildable frontage on the larger mixed-use designated area. Pedestrian walkways: A continuous internal pedestrian walkway that is a minimum of five feet in width is required to be provided from the perimeter sidewalk to the main building entrance for non-residential uses. Where the walkway crosses vehicular driving surfaces, it is required to be distinguished from the vehicular surface through the use of pavers, colored, or scored concrete or bricks. There is a pedestrian walkway depicted on the site plan from the sidewalk along Ten Mile Road to the main building entrance, but there is not a pedestrian walkway from the north from the sidewalk along Franklin Road. One will be required. During the pre-application meeting, staff discussed with the applicant the need for the structure to be built to the street buffer along Ten Mile and Franklin Roads, and discussed other site design options. These options consisted of locating the drive-through on the south side of the building or detaching the drive-through from the building and locating it south of the building similar to that of Cap Ed Credit Union, located at the intersection of South Meridian Road and East Overland Road. And there is a diagram of an example in your staff report if you'd like to reference it if you haven't already. The proposed plan is deficient in many of the goals and design concepts elements in the Ten Mile Plan, as noted. Due to its location at a major intersection and gateway to the Ten Mile area, development of this site, consistent with the Ten Mile interchange plan, is key. If the proposed concept plan is approved by council, staff recommends, as a provision of the amended development agreement, that screening is provided in the street buffers along Ten Mile and Franklin Roads, adjacent to the five drive-through lanes in the form of berms, landscaping walls, architectural elements, or a combination of these elements to produce an appropriate buffer adjacent to public spaces and roadways. Concept building elevations for the financial institution were submitted, as shown. The design of the structure is required to comply with the design elements in the Ten Mile Plan as set forth in the development agreement and with the standards in the Architectural Standards Manual. This review will take place with the submission of a designer view application with the certificate of zoning compliance application. A conceptual perspective drawing was submitted for the north side of the building demonstrating how the drive-through area could be screened with vegetated screen walls, as shown. Staff is supportive of this concept if the proposed concept plan is approved by council, but would like to see more landscaping, trees and shrubs, and birmingham within the street buffers adjacent to the drive-through along with the screen walls. If council approves the applicant's request for an amendment to the concept plan, staff recommends birmingham and additional landscaping, trees and shrubs with vegetated screen walls are provided in the street buffers adjacent to the drive-through along the north and west boundaries of the site as previously mentioned. Written testimony has been received from Aurora Rypel, the applicant's representative, in agreement with the staff report. Staff will stand for any questions.
Sonya? You have any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden.
Real quick, question for Sonya. To require additional landscaping, are there minimum standards in, that we have already that to, to say, okay, you need to do this? How do we, how do we be specific about, yes, you need additional landscaping?
Councilman Hoagland, Mr. Mayor, councilman, there are no specific requirements specifically like a certain amount of trees per linear frontage, that kind of thing. If you want to approve this with a dense landscape buffer, I would suggest possibly a buffer that results in trees that touch at maturity, similar to landscaping within buffers to abutting like commercial uses on residential properties.
Mr. Mayor, Sonya, thank, thank you, that helps a little bit.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Sonya, would you help, help me understand? It sounds like from your presentation that the application does not meet the site design requirements. There are challenges with the pedestrian walkways. There are challenges with it complying with the intended plan for the TM Creek area. It doesn't sound like there was any additional information provided by the applicant that addressed any of those concerns that the staff had specifically. I guess what I'm trying to understand is, is basically if council approves the applicant's request, we're essentially saying that the applicant does not have to comply with all of the concerns that were just pointed out in your presentation?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Perrow, Councilwoman Perrow, councilman. It would be letting them out of the floor area ratio, design elements of the plan, and the height. The applicant did come back with the plan that's before you with the screen walls as, as kind of a mitigation for, for screening that drive-through from the public street. So, that is one thing they've done. The pedestrian walkway connection from the north is something that we could condition to be provided with the certificate of zoning compliance. But overall, the site layout as is, is what they're proposing, and that's, that's what's before you tonight for, for your decision on.
Any additional questions at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden.
Sonya, on that FAR, the floor area ratio in the Ten Mile Creek area, is, is, is that just for the corners, or is that for that whole development?
It's for the entire Ten Mile area, Mr. Hoagland.
Mr. Mayor, follow-up?
Councilman Holden.
In, in looking, you know, driving past that regularly, is, is that something that the other buildings have achieved? Or is, are they lacking as well? Because as noted, other buildings are two-story.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hoagland, councilman, that, that's the reason that council is, is bringing up these issues is that so far, we have not received the development that complies with the FAR goals. So, council really needs to consider in approving this application for this application as well as future applications, how this is gonna affect the Ten Mile area.
Okay. Thank you. With that, we'll ask the applicant to come forward. And I believe. I'm assuming it's going to be Aurora. And I will not. Try to pronounce the last name even though it was already stated. But well, please say your name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Mayor, this is Mark Hazel with Lombard Conrad Architects. I am a principal at Lombard Conrad Aurora as one of my staff members. I want to thank you and thank the city council for. For reviewing this. My address is one two two one Shoreline Lane, Boise, Idaho. Eight three seven oh two. And I'm representing Idaho Central Credit Union. We also have Dusty Wilson Hume on the line who is the representative for Idaho Central Credit Union. So at any point. We would like to hear from the owner we can. I will start by saying that. Public safety and pedestrian safety is first and foremost on our minds when it comes to. Site layout. And with a financial institution that does require having. Bat lanes or traffic lanes, the layout of those lanes is critical. This site is a unique configuration with these three parcels. We are flanked to the east with a irrigation district easement. And the the parcels that we're consolidating create some of an L shape. So. With these three parcels and the consolidation. Laying out of the drive-throughs, we tried and looked at several different variations. Of how to put these drive-throughs on this site. The issues that we ran into while laying out the drive-through locations were that we. When locating these elsewhere on the site and with. The turn-ins off of West Peak Cloud Lane. And the adjacent drive to the east, putting these these drive-throughs on any other location. Puts pedestrians at risk. What we really want to mitigate here is pedestrian access crossing over drive-through lanes. In Idaho, we we have multiple different variations of vehicles if people drive from, you know, small Priuses to large F three fifties. And what we do not want to have happen is family members. A mother and their children crossing over a drive-through lane in order to access the credit union. And for somebody fumbling through their wallet or trying to take care of their receipts to pull out and accidentally hit a hit a child or or pedestrian. So when laying out the site, we we. In reviewing it, the best safety to pedestrians was to locate this drive on the north side. We understand that 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 does put the city in a position to having to to reviewing and approving a layout and a concept that. That deviates from the the set. Standards out here. And we are cognizant and Idaho Central Credit Union's cognizant as to the responsibility to the community to provide. Aesthetically pleasing and long-term institutions. Then they are not building these financial institutions to last three to four years or building these the last fifteen to twenty years. So. This is a long-term facility that will be out here for hopefully multiple generations. When discussing this with the city prior, we we discussed the concerns with the layout with the drive-throughs. Being at the intersection of Ten Mile. And Franklin Road. And one of the suggestions made and one of the suggestions that we thought was was a. A good approach to help screen this was to provide a architectural and landscape screen wall. On the north side along Franklin Road. What this does is it it helps screen. The drive-through traffic on that northernmost ATM lane. From vehicle traffic off of Franklin Road. We do not currently have Birmingham shown or additional landscape as as was commented on in the revised staff report. We are happy to work with the city to revise frontage landscape. To come with the come up with a compromise and a solution that works for the city. Idaho Central Credit Union wants to be out of this location, wants to be a part of this community and wants to provide. Pleasing facilities that are not only safe but but meet the. Meet the requirements of the city. This was our. The most appropriate solution for this as as we saw it. Again, having the the irrigation easements. That would not allow us to build structures over it, including a drive-through lane or a remote drive-through puts a set of hindrance. As far as the the best and most appropriate layout and location for this credit union. I would also mention that to the south, we have Happy Teriyaki and Epic. Shine Car Wash that also have what I can tell drive-throughs along South Ten Mile Road. I I believe we're providing a very aesthetically pleasing building out here. And we'll work with the city to make sure that we're providing adequate Birmingham and adequate landscaping. To to make sure that this this meets the the city. The city requirements or come to a compromise on how to meet the city requirements with landscaping. If there's any other questions, we can loop Dusty Wilson human at this time if if the council would like to ask. Any questions of the architect specifically or the owner specifically.
Thank you, Mark. Council, do you have any questions for the applicant at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
Thank you. So. This is, I'm familiar with this with this location. It is a unique uniquely shaped. Property with the three lots and how they're how they join together and and all the different factor geographic geographical factors on that site. Mike, first of all, let me say that I think the screens are very nicely done. That they they're aesthetically appealing, at least from the the photos that are on here, the renderings that are on here. Two questions for you. The first would be, would the screens extend farther down? To the to the east to to cover potentially your three or four cars that are. That are lined up to go through or is it they just are they just going to stop? You know. Essentially. Behind what would be the first or second car? And then the other question I have is sort of a bigger picture question, which is. What what is it about this building in this location that would encourage us to? To basically. Approve something that that doesn't really fit with the plan for this area. What is unique about about your building that would? Encourage us to basically overlook a bunch of requirements that had already been set for the Ten Mile Creek area.
Thank you for the question. I would address the the first question. We in the concept, yes, we do only show that covering. Primarily just the the main drive right there, that that sixty-two feet of. Of ATM area, we can extend that further over to cover more of that eastern section to to help screen any incoming vehicles. That might be. It might be better addressed with Birmingham on that end. We do need to address the fact that the council has commented on. Providing landscape Birmingham in here and. And I think we could have a nice mixture of these screen panels and a mixture of the Birmingham as well. Now whether that Birmingham happens on the east end or the screen panels extend, I would I would be fine with either of those options and coming up with a. A concept to extend that screen wall to the east to. To mitigate visibility of that traffic as well as some some additional tall tree areas. Now, as far as the second question goes, what makes this an appealing site? The the appealing site. Would be that that this is at the intersection of West Franklin and Ten Mile Road. I think the it's been very evident over the past several years that the city of Meridian is growing. Growing very rapidly and with this parcel in this undeveloped site, this would be a very nice iconic location for. Franklin and Ten Mile for Idaho Central Credit Union to have a very aesthetically pleasing branch. The general material palette that we use on on these facilities. Is a mixture of long-lasting metal panel and a composite metal panel and brick. This design is is primarily a metal panel and and brick structure. It is, you know, the if you if you look at this compared to an EPH system, this is a twenty to twenty-five year plus. Product before it is refinished or or needs maintenance. We're using durable, strong materials to establish a presence here. We want to show that this is a financial institution that is going to be here for the long term. And we're doing that, I believe, through the materials and not only through the materials, but also through the the entry location. I know it's not presented here, maybe on the prior slide, but as you can tell, we have a very strong open. Public entrance on that south side off of West Peak Cloud Lane. That does have a very taller volume. So. We do have a mixture of solid wall on the front, but we also have a very nice mixture and nice area of open glazing. Off of South Peak Cloud Lane and it will be very evident from Ten Mile Road with the. I would say the pitched roof at the main entry.
Mr. Mayor, a follow up?
Councilwoman Pro.
Thank you. I guess maybe my second question wasn't wasn't very clear. What I was asking, obviously, this is a very desirable intersection with as much traffic as comes by. This location, I guess what I was asking was, is there something unique that Idaho Central is providing to this Ten Mile area that the. You know, perhaps. Or have you looked at other other sites in within the entire development? Or what I guess is that is my question making sense? It's it's sort of like I I look at this as a trade-off. If we're going to allow. Allow you to to not meet all these other requirements within the Ten Mile Creek. Is there something that's very unique about what you're doing that couldn't go in it? In a different location?
I understand. I think I understand the question. I think this question is better suited for for Dusty Wilson Hume, the. The owner's representative from Idaho Central Credit Union. The the question sounds to be sounds to me to be like as far as a catchment area and as far as what. What services is this financial institution providing that no other or or that isn't present here currently that this community needs? And if we're able to, Sonya, or I don't know who's who's controlling, would we be able to? To open him up to.
Can you hear me, Mark?
On this? Yes, I can hear you.
Statistically. Two of our council members should be members of Idaho Central Credit Union.
Need to identify himself for the record, please.
This is Dusty Wolston Home, project manager for Idaho Central Credit Union. Address P O Box two four six nine, Pocatello, Idaho eight three two oh six. Statistically, two members of the council should one or two members of the council should be members of Idaho Central Credit Union. Somewhere between one and four and one one and six residents in depending on the area of Ada County are members of our credit union. We provide a very essential service to members. To our communities where credit union. As a credit union, we're one of the best as far as financial institutions go. We're number one in the Northwest for our return to member. That means that we're. Better for the people who are members of the credit union than anybody else in the Northwest. As a community. You want financial institutions like that in your community. We're good for you. We're good for Idaho. We're good for Ada County and we're good to our members. We are. Our. Mission statement is helping Idahoans and helping members achieve financial success. Now. Yeah, maybe maybe it'd be great if this building were seven feet taller or if. If the drive-up weren't visible, but this location is highly attractive. Only because of the visibility. You build a bunch of berms and put trees that touch edge to edge that block the visibility of the building. Then residents of Meridian won't be able to tell there's a financial institution there to help them. So those sorts of things, those sorts of decisions that are very unfriendly to business. Are very unfriendly to the people who who use those businesses. I get and I understand the desire to have a very pedestrian-friendly community. But but we all know that we just came out of six months of winter when folks aren't going to be walking five miles to get to this branch. We also, as a credit union, we know that in order for a financial institution building to be very successful, it needs somewhere between. Twenty and twenty-five thousand members to have very easy access and easier the access, the more successful for them and for. For the local branch location. So all these things that make us hard to see, hard to get to, make it dangerous. For our our members, for elderly members, for for young mothers having to walk across the drive aisles where vehicles are are going through the same area or have to walk. Around the entire site to get to a sidewalk. Are unfriendly to to business and they're unfriendly to the members and to your residents in your local community. So, yeah, we've made some compromises here. We've tried to do the very best we can. We're good neighbors. We're good for Idaho. Now, the other side of that is if you, you know, if you push and you and you really want this to be. Thirty feet tall or two stories tall. Very heavily biased towards sharing parking with with one of our neighbors, all of those sorts of things that staff level review push for. Will it drive us away? Maybe not, but it it just won't be as good for the members and for the residents of the community. And that should be the most important thing.
Yes, I have a question probably more for Mark. When we talk about Birmingham, you talked about the screening. There's also possibility of Birmingham, but when we look when we. Site plan, and I don't know, Sonya, if you can get back to that or whoever is controlling that to 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 the layout, the site plan. It's we we see these these lines. On app and and we can't even, you know, we don't even know the distances that. Are from the drive, the last drive lane to the sidewalk. So if we say, yeah, we want Birmingham, we think you ought to include Birmingham. No idea what that would look like. I mean, is that a four-foot berm? Is it a six-foot berm? Is it eighteen-inch berm? What? As as someone who looks at these site plans and. Can can as the knowledge base to say, yeah, we can do Birmingham with these screens, but the maximum height would be X. What what would that be? What fits that site? That makes it look nice that. As as Dusty said, doesn't doesn't obliterate the view of your building, but at the same time, it's it's going to be a nice quality look. To to the outside. I've just seen cars stacked in a queue. So can you give me some idea what type of berm would work in that area, if any?
Well, I would have to work with our landscape architect and make sure that we're not exceeding a slope for. Slope for any of the burned up areas that would require retaining wall or a small retaining wall. But I would assume that we could we could put a three to four foot berm up there. Now, a three to four foot berm with some vegetation included over the top of that would. You know, it would it would increase the size of that vegetation. So we we would. End up with a taller blocking screen area. But based on the distances there, I would say three feet is a comfortable is a comfortable height.
Okay, thank you.
We can and we can come up with exhibits. We'll come up with exhibits to provide. Provide to the city to make sure that that we're. Exhibits, including not only a updated landscape plan showing any Birmingham needed by the city, but. Also, you know, renderings like we've provided that will give you an accurate depiction of what our intent is.
Good. Thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
Council, any additional questions for the applicant at this time?
Not yet.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to public testimony then. Chris or Adrian, did we have anybody from the public who signed up to testify?
Mr. Mayor, we did have just Dusty and Aurora signed up prior to the hearing to testify, but no other citizens were signed in.
If there's anybody that would like to provide. Comment on this application, I encourage you to raise your hand at any time. Well, if there's anybody that would like to provide a comment on this application, I encourage you to raise your hand point in time. And not seeing anybody raise their hand. I guess I'll ask the applicant if they'd like to provide any additional last words to the council.
No.
No, sir. None at this time.
Okay, so back to questions like Councilwoman Borton.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I didn't know if there would be public providing some questions or not, but in following up, I think Councilwoman Pro was focused on the right question regarding the ten mile specific area plan and the the staff report of of April fourteenth on the second page has seven bullet points. Each identifying specific components of that plan. And none of which are met by this design. So in preparation for the hearing, it looked as though Idaho Central Credit Union, which is a fantastic community partner, is an exceptional round peg and our long term plan at ten mile is a wonderful square hole. And with that mindset, I hadn't heard how you address those specific, those seven specific bullet points in the staff report that are admittedly not addressed with what's presented. Again, a wonderful looking project, but it just misses on so many elements or that that we just still haven't heard why each of those seven should be ignored for the greater good.
Would you, is this, would you like me to comment on those?
Sure, I, I, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Borton.
You know, I hear a lot of great remarks about this project, and it sounded like staff had tried to steer this application to be compliant with the ten mile interchange specific area plan, and that is our goal. And we comply with our plan and we hold ourselves and our applicants accountable to it. Or we just don't have a plan at all. And if if this application is trying to send the message that really the plan almost as a whole, it just shouldn't apply at all. That's what I hear this application stating, because it requires overlooking so many different components of it in order for it to get approved. And it's a wonderful looking building, and it's a wonderful community partner. But back to my round peg square hole. I can't, I wanted to give you the opportunity to try and articulate specifics on why those seven points shouldn't apply here.
Mr. Mayor.
Let's see if Mark has, if you'd like to address those first.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So we we had a couple workshop sessions with the city of Meridian to review the the noncompliance. And the primary concern in reviewing with the city of Meridian during these workshops was the frontage. The frontage and the screen wall, one of the recommendations was to to review what was done at Connections Credit Union just north of ten mile or just north of this this site along ten mile. And to see how they screened their drive through that that faces the main roadway. And through those workshops, I was under the impression and and the renderings hadn't changed from the initial workshop up until now, with the exception of the screen panels. I was under the the perception that the the primary focus and the primary concern was the screening of the drive through on the north side. That was our primary focus was to come up with a solution to screen that drive and to and and basically not impose additional cost to increase the overall building height to a two to four story facility. If that is required for the city to to develop here, that's that's a something that we'll have to address with the owner and get their sign off as as that's a much much larger cost impact than Birmingham and and screen along the the north and west side.
Councilwoman Pro, do you have some questions?
First, I I wanted to say that I I agree with Councilwoman Borton, and he stated the question much more much clearer than I did. Basically, that was the point I was trying to get at. But I also wanted to say that one of the things that we consistently heard through our comprehensive plan update was that there's a desire from the public for us to stick to the plans that we make. And that have that go through very long says lots of input from citizens, which is the same process that was gone through when this plan was put together for ten mile. So it is, it is about this particular location. It is about this particular application, but it's also about a bigger picture element for us as decision makers that our citizens have been very clear that they want us to stick to the plans that we create. So just wanted to give the applicant that context for why we're we're honing in on these kinds of questions specifically.
So i- i- is the, I guess what I'm hearing is that the the staff recommendation to city council is contingent on the screen wall is is not, the staff recommendation for approval is not only contingent on the screen wall, but would be contingent on meeting the seven other or six other requirements, including the overall building height and and story, minimum story requirements.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Barton.
That's a, that's a fair question. I looked at the top of page four of the staff report in in preparation talks about that more holistic concern that I saw staff raise about the multitude of of elements in that ten mile plan which just aren't being met. It speaks to the screening specifically, you're correct, but I didn't think that eliminated what staff had identified as the the broader concern, at least that staff had noted.
So to the point that's been made, and I I guess I would ask this to staff if they feel like they can make answer this. Is there a point? And and I'm I'm just looking at what's already there. You know, I've I've heard the conversation. You know, and it's much kind of like, I'm almost felt like it's like our downtown. You know, where we are our urban rural district where you come off the interstate, you got a lot of transit oriented businesses right there, and that's what seems to be going in or already been developed in this area. Does it make sense in any way to carve out a portion of the existing plan? Is there that line? That would make sense because of what's already been approved? I'm just asking the question. I mean, my big concern is kind of to what the applicant had said. The they're building a long term building for fifty, seventy-five years. And is this the building, the type of building that you would envision as being an important part of our community in this location in this manner for the next fifty to seventy-five years? With or without the changes to the plan and that standpoint. And and so I did hear a little bit of a conversation where other parts are have the same DA or have DA restrictions on them, but it sounds like this area does not. So I don't know if this is a bill, Sonia, Caleb, if he's on, thoughts?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm not sure if Bill or Caleb is on, but this side, as well as all of the sites in this ten mile creek area and the overall ten mile plan, they are tied through their development agreements to be consistent with the ten mile plan, design elements and goals, as well as the architectural standards manual. This corner is is very prominent, as I said, and it is, it is very important. It is a cornerstone to this development. If this is approved, you know, it it will further affect probably future applications down the line. And and as you said, this is going to be a long term building, and it is a very nice structure, but is it the is it the correct location for it to be here? You know, that that's what the council needs to determine tonight. I I think I did hear the applicant say that they could go up, I believe, to two stories if if pressed, if they had to. And I think that would be a a huge you know, avenue towards complying with some of the ten mile design.
I apologize. This is, this is Mark Hazel. Am I still unmuted?
We can hear you.
Okay, I I would like to point out again, I mentioned this earlier, but with the Happy Teriyaki and Epic Shine Car Wash and Einstein's Oilery. Is is this particular site unique or or different than the developed sites I just mentioned? In that there, I mean, I don't believe the Epic Shine Car Wash is a two story building. I don't believe Happy Teriyaki is either or or Einstein's Oilery just off of Franklin Road, two parcels over. So I I guess my my question would be, is is Idaho Central being held to a different standard than the already developed sites in this area?
Mr. Mayor, if I may respond?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, it is different in that it is located at the corner at the gateway to the ten mile area. Franklin and ten mile roads, it that intersection on this corner, as well as across the street to the west, are the gateway corridors into this development. So yes, it is different than the other ones. However, they are all still in the same plan and and they're all subject to these design elements, but this one is is very important where it's located.
And and Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, what I can add to, when we discussed this as staff last week, it was my suggestion to Sonia to make clear where we're deviating from the plan significantly. Because again, the council has the ability to choose to do that if you wish, but you need to know that you're choosing to do that. And I think where we were concerned from the staff level is because it's just such a prominent structure and a prominent location that it will more likely than not set the stage for other applications that come in this areas and 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 again, I don't think it's holding them to a different standard. It's holding to the standard that's in the plan and in the DA that's already exists. So it's not new. What what other ones may have gotten approved is really not the point. The council needs to be aware that we do have plans and they did take a lot of community involvement to get there, and you at least need to be aware of the consequences because the impacts it can have on future requests.
Mark. Mark, this is Dusty. Were you clearly made aware that you were deficient in seven areas of your design? Especially the height.
The areas of design, yes, we were deficient. All new commercial designs should have a continuous unbroken frontage. We deviate from that with our drive through on the north with the punched openings, because we do have a drive through on the north. What I understood during our workshop sessions was that the 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 screen wall was the the major element that would would help be help be a compromise as far as a deviation from these these seven items that that by providing additional screening, by putting additional cost indoor frontage, that that would assist or or be a compromise in meeting the city's city's requirements and and getting through the the process.
The, you know, the sidewalk thing is a non issue. We can fix that easily, right? But were you, were you aware that that the building was drastically undersized for the site and should have been taller, maybe even two stories? And should have been heavily dependent, as staff said, on shared parking green.
Uh, no, that was not made, that was not made was not a major concern to get through this process. The major concern was again that the 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 screening, the based upon the staff recommendation and, you know, if we if we, if the staff did not recommend approval, we would have had more conversations as to how to meet the the heights requirement, but with the current design and with the discussions of the current design with staff, we felt that the primary concern was the frontage screening and that the other seven items were were minor items based upon the design that we presented. With the fact that we provide long lasting materials, high durable materials. In our view, a very aesthetically pleasing building that does set a good stage for this intersection. That the the, after discussing that with staff, it was recommended that just by providing the the screen walls on the other side, that we would be able to work through this process with the city. And that that was the 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 one item that would help help come to help the city and ICCU come to a agreement on how to move forward by providing a aesthetically pleasing frontage on those two sides with additional landscaping. The heights requirement was was minor from what I was made aware of. But if there's, you know, if if this is the venue to discuss this again, then I I guess at this point we are open to recommendations or criteria to discuss with the owner, recommendations from the city to discuss with the owner on how to meet the requirements.
So counsel, I mean, the way I'm going to try to maybe help frame this and for you all, and maybe you're already there, but I do think that you are at a turning point in this area. Where currently you have an area that you go, you drive your car to get your oil changed, spiff it up and get money on your way out without ever leaving your car. If, but with it, knowing that this is not the last application that will come through in this area. Do you want to get back to adherence to the plan moving forward or not? And I think if if you are looking to deviate from these seven areas, I do think you need to we need to open this back up for consideration about which direction we are going to go. That's going to be my recommendation. You all can take it or leave it from from that standpoint, but I assume the applicant was made aware that there was a specific area plan that had access to read that plan. They knew the requirements of the plan. And they moved forward despite what conversations may or may not have been occurred with staff, that they were aware of what they were developing into from that standpoint, or should have been made aware. So it's really whether or not you want to hold them to what standard moving forward. Are there any further questions?
Mr. Mayor, a question, but prefaced with with a comment. You know, every site is not perfect to fit what the applicant may want to do. And they have to do mitigations and we have to do some work like screenings on the north and west, and how do we make that acceptable? But I I think it's been pointed out by council members that there's, there's a lot of deviations or or not complying with hardly any of the standards that are set for this area. And it does bother me that there are other businesses there already that didn't meet the standards to one degree or another. I I think it's a matter for this particular project. And again, it goes back to the particular site, looking at the flow, understand, okay, the drive has to be for safety reasons that were out on the north side. Okay, so how do we mitigate that? But being that this corner is a statement corner, what other mitigations could be put into place to enhance this project in this building? And that's something I'd like to see. And I I don't like designing on the fly because A, I'm not a designer and B, it just doesn't turn out too well. I I would prefer that we lay this application, move it a couple weeks to here again, and maybe have the applicant come back and see if they can mitigate reasonably, and then we could consider consider that. We've we've given consideration to other projects before because they don't meet every single item. And it might be that they come back and they don't meet enough in our eyes, but I'd like to give them that opportunity. And it might be that they come back and they don't meet enough in our eyes, but I'd like to give them that opportunity. Uh, to see what more that more could be done, but I'm I'm open to suggestions on that.
Mister Mayor.
Councilmember.
I would agree with Councilmember Hoagland, um. ICCU is is a great partner, community always have been, always will be, um, I I I really want this project. To happen. If there are certain things that we need to. Give guidance to ICCU if we choose to continue or to or to put, you know, move this project out. So they can, you know, do a redesign or talk about different things they can mitigate. What are what are those two or three things or, uh, points of reference that we can help guide ICCU in doing?
Mister Mayor.
Councilmember Pro.
I just want to say that, um, so. Full disclosure, I am a member of ICCU and this would be near my home, it would be wonderful. Um, but for me, this isn't about who who is applying, whether it's ICCU or a different bank or a different company. Um, this would be personally highly beneficial to be located there for me and my family. For me, it's about what what's a standard that we are setting. Um, if we choose to overlook the multiplicity of of items that is in our plan. Um, and and not require the applicant to comply by them, it it really doesn't matter who the applicant is. For me, it's about the standard that we're setting and for any of the applications moving forward, I wish I could. Could speak to the decisions that were made from the past, um. The past approvals, I can't, I wasn't on the council at that time, but I can say that, um, we've had, just like I said, we've had a lot of. A lot of, um. Communication with the public who was wanting us to follow the plans that we. Have set forward for these different areas specifically, so. I just wanted to say that this, for me, this is not about Idaho Central Credit Union, that I would be looking at this just as critically. If it was about any applicant, I don't want to, I don't want them to feel like they're being singled out.
Council, anyone else like to provide some feedback to Councilmember Burt's comments about? What issues you'd like to see addressed, if any?
Mister Mayor.
Councilmember Borden.
I think Councilman Hoagland's suggestion is a good one, um, provides that opportunity to. Address the questions that Councilman Burt's asking, and I think the starting point are those found in the staff report of April fourteen. In particular, I mean, the plan as a whole identifies the components that are required for a development within its boundaries. So that gives the direction, but specific to this one, we have a short list that staff had compiled. That would be a really good starting spot.
Then with that in mind, um. I I guess I would ask staff, um, and the applicant, is there a specific timeframe that would make sense to? Bring this back before I ask council for a motion? Is it two weeks, is it three weeks?
Mister Mayor, uh, if I may respond, uh, staff would need revised plans at least ten days prior to the hearing date that they select, so. They should probably consider that in their request.
So more likely closer to minimum of three weeks, if not a month, is what I just heard. Mark, um, do you have any suggestions on what you're hearing in the timeframe?
Uh, we will hit the whatever timeframe is established, so if you, if if we can hit a, uh. Three week timeframe, we will. And and meet the city requirements.
Mister Mayor, that would be the May fifth.
Thank you, I was trying to get to a calendar.
Yeah, fucked me too.
Okay.
Mister Mayor, this is Bill. I'd like to point out to the applicant and even the council that the planning and zoning commission, we also processing that. We have processed the conditional use permit for ICCU. To have that taken up by the commission at next week's P and Z hearing. So it also asked that the applicant request continuance of that project. Because they need to get the DA in place before they can move forward on that conditional use permit application.
Okay. Chris or Adrian, how does the this May fifth pose any problems with what's already put on there or not?
Mister Mayor, there is only a one public hearing on May fifth regarding land use. And a budget amendment from community development, so you are wide open.
Yeah, well, May fifth seems to be a good date.
Yes, sir.
With that, do I have any motions, the motion?
Mister Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Mister Burt wants to go forward. I can give this a try, uh, I I would move that we continue the public hearing for Idaho Central Credit Union H twenty twenty dash. Zero zero one six, uh, to May fifth, was that the right date? It may fifth, and that they also, uh, request the continuance of their conditional use. Hearing at the planning and zoning level in conjunction with this, uh. Move of their public hearing at the council level.
I have a motion in a second, is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay? Guys have it. With that, um, I'm gonna ask council real quick that, do we need a recess? Or would we like to continue, okay, let's go ahead. Let's go ahead and take a ten minute recess and we'll reconvene at eight PM.
Hey, Chris, I, uh, I lost my screen, my, uh, back, the information, did did that come down?
What information are you talking about, the presentation?
Yeah, the presentation, I I've lost everything.
Everybody, we we took that off.
I can see, I can see the Zoom, but I I don't have anything now, so should I log back in?
No, you're you're right, I took it off the screen.
Oh, okay, we don't have anything up, okay, thank you.
Alexa, turn on the living room lights.
Jessica, before we get started, I wanted to find out if Alexa listened and turned your lights on.
You wanted to find out if Alexa turned my lights on?
Yeah, before I could hit mute, we heard you asking your lights to be turned on. I thought that was pretty.
Yep, I have all my lights programmed to Alexa.
We have the same with our.
And my thermostat in my house.
Nice.
Yeah. My spouse set it up and I didn't know for a week how to turn the lights on because he told, he didn't tell me the command.
We had a friend visit and they were trying to turn a light off and they had no idea. They kept calling it everything but what it was called.
I have 10 foot ceilings and a whole bunch of windows behind me and it's just like a big cavernous opening. And so this chroma cam is supposed to help the camera focus on me and not everything around, but I don't know if it just looks blurry to everybody else.
Looks good. It blurs the background.
All right. So since we are all back, we'll go ahead and call the meeting back into order. The next item on our agenda is item six J, public hearing for Bannock Ridge H 2019 dash zero one four three. Open this public hearing with staff comments.
Request for a development agreement modification and a preliminary plat. This site consists of 4.35 acres of land. It's owned R4 and is located at 2940 South Mesa Way. This property was previously platted as lot three, block two, Kachina Estates subdivision. It was annexed back in 2017 as part of a larger 13.58 acre parcel, also called Bannock Ridge and is governed by a development agreement approved with that project. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation is low density residential, which calls for three or fewer units per acre. Development agreement modification is requested to remove the subject 4.35 acre property from the 13.58 acre boundary of the existing agreement for the purpose of entering into a new agreement consistent with the proposed development plan. A new preliminary plat is proposed consisting of 10 building lots and five common lots on 4.35 acres of land in the R4 zoning district for the construction of single family residential detached homes. There is an existing home and accessory structures that are proposed to remain on a lot in the proposed subdivision. The southernmost accessory structure on lot 10, block one, that has a purple star on it, does not comply with the minimum 15 foot rear setback. The plat will need to be revised to comply or the structure will need to be removed. Access is proposed via South Mesa Way at the east boundary and via the extension of an existing stub street, East Loggers Pass Street at the west boundary of the site, which is proposed to stub to the south boundary of the subdivision for future extension. Those accesses are noted with, with the red arrows. A 10 foot wide segment of the city's multi-use pathway system is proposed along the frontage of this site adjacent to South Mesa Way, extending along the southern boundary to the northwest corner of the site for connection to the existing pathway in Glacier Springs subdivision to the west along the 10 mile creek in accord with the pathways master plan. There is a short segment approximately 10 feet of the pathway in Glacier Springs subdivision at the northwest corner of the site that didn't get constructed with that development, leaving a gap in the pathway system. The current development agreement contains a provision for the missing section to be completed with this development if approval can be obtained from the Glacier Springs Homeowners Association. Staff is recommending that this provision is carried over into the new development agreement. Because the area of the proposed plat is below five acres in size, the qualified open space and site amenity standards listed in the UDC do not apply. However, common area is proposed where a segment of the city's regional pathway system is planned through the subdivision and where the 10 mile creek is located, totaling 11% of common open space. Conceptual building elevations were submitted for future homes within this development. Homes depicted are a single story and a single story with a bonus room over the garage with a variety and mix of finished materials consisting of horizontal and vertical siding and stucco with stone and brick veneer accents. Two-story homes aren't shown, but may also be constructed. The commission recommended approval of this application. I'll just go through a summary of the commission public hearing. Dan Lardy from Levittan Association, Levittan Associates, the applicant's representative testified in favor along with Ryan Reclaw. No one testified in opposition. The following folks commented. Anarchy Benford, Matt Benford, Celeste Blackburn, and Jamie Clausen. Written testimony was received from Dan Lardy, Levittan Associates, the applicant's representative in agreement with the staff report. Key issues of public testimony were as follows. Concern from the homeowners to the south, the Benfords pertaining to the lack of substantial buffering between the public walk path and the full length of their property and the impact on their ability effectively to effectively irrigate their land. They request a good neighbor fence and a more substantial vegetative buffer along the pathway to clearly distinguish the private from the public space and to discourage trespassing and protect their privacy. And a berm along their property to allow them to continue to effectively flood irrigate their property. Preference for the multi-use pathway to follow the creek consistent with the pathway in adjacent developments rather than jog through the proposed neighborhood. Concern that the proposed development isn't consistent with the existing CCNRs for the subdivision for Kachina Estates. Complaint pertaining to the neighborhood meeting, i.e. the time of day it was held when nobody could attend and that it was held in a place where there wasn't much room in a pub restaurant. They didn't provide a space for them to meet as they thought no one would show up. Concerned that the proposed homes in the development won't be compatible with existing homes in the area. Key issues of discussion by the commission were as follows. The new preliminary plat won't trigger minimum qualified open space and site amenity standards since the site is below five acres in size. Whereas the existing plat does, they would prefer more open spaces provided. Preference for three, the three original parcels to develop together as currently platted rather than splitting this one and possibly others off into individual developments. And again, its effect it would have on the overall common area and site amenities or lack thereof. And preference for a berm fence and landscaping to be constructed by the developer along the southern boundary adjacent to the Benford property. And preference for lot two, block two to be a common area lot rather than a buildable lot for a future retention pond space. Commission made the changes to the staff recommendation are as follows. They added a development agreement provision requiring the developer to construct a berm no less than 18 inches tall along the southern boundary of the development with fencing on both sides of the pathway and landscaping between the pathway and the fence. The applicant was requested to work with the adjacent property owners, the Benfords, on an agree, agreeable berm height and placement and enhanced landscaping prior to the council meeting tonight for presentation. And lastly, they added a condition requiring lot two, block two, to be converted from a buildable to a common area lot. Outstanding issues for council tonight is resolution of the landscaping and fencing along the southern boundary of the site adjacent to the Benford property. A revised landscape plan was submitted as shown that depicts twice as many trees as originally proposed along the southern boundary of the pathway. The applicant should address if perimeter fencing is proposed and if so, what type and height and whether a berm is proposed or not, and if so, how tall and whether or not it's necessary for it to encroach on the Benfords property. There has been no written testimony received since the commission hearing. Staff will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Sonia. Are there any questions at this point in time from council? Okay, this point in time, I ask the applicant to come forward.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Before we start with the application or the applicant's testimony, I just, I thought it was important to disclose. I live in the Glacier Springs Homeowners Association that's adjacent to this project. I haven't attended any of the planning and zoning commission meetings, didn't attend the neighborhood meeting. I've, I've kept more than an arm's length away from this process. And while I'm not directly affected, not within 300 feet, I just thought it was important to disclose that before we go through this process.
Thank you, Councilman.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members, Dan Lardy, Levittan Associates, 1324 First Street, South, Nampa, eight three six five one. So I want to say thank you for staff or thank you to staff. Do I have my PowerPoint? Is it, is it available?
I'm getting that for you right now. My apologies.
That's right. I have it in front of me, but I don't know. It might, it might be useful for council to see it. So, so while we wait, just want to let you know that we have, we do agree with staff report and that we have proposed a couple of different options for the berm along with, for our neighbors to the south. I'm not having control of the slides. Am I missing it?
You will just have to tell me when you want to go to the next.
Oh, fine. Next slide, please. So we have, we've had some brief conversations with the Benfords to the south and we've proposed a couple of different options. We're in agreement with the 18 inch berm, which puts it all on our property that was stated in the staff report. The, the next slide, please. So we've, we've proposed the berm one option. It provides a little bit of irrigation control, a little, at least a little bit more irrigation control for, for the Benfords. Height, I think, is an issue with, with them. The, it also encroaches onto their property by about four and a half foot. Again, the 18 inch berm will put it all on our property. But if they, if they would like a taller berm, then we would need to probably work with them to try and gain some slope easement on their property. Next slide, please. So berm two, it seemed like the conversation that I had with the Benfords that berm option two was more, more what they were looking for. It provides them a bit more privacy and a little bit more separation from people looking over and trying to, to go along or look or encroach onto their property or trespass onto their prop, onto their property. This, this would require some, a slope easement from, from the Benfords of about nine feet. The height of this berm is three foot from existing ground. And we put the fence at the top of the berm and then we sloped down at three to one till we hit our pathway, which puts the pathway just a little bit lower than the height of the berm. And it also allows, it would provide a bit more privacy. Next slide, please. So just, just a quick note, their, their property is, the, the back of their home is about 160 feet from the, from the rear corner to, to where the fence is proposed on there. It, it doesn't seem like a lot in, in their realm. You know, they live on a five acre piece of park property. In the subdivision though, 160 feet, that's, you know, it's half, about a half of a football field. Again, which is the reason why we're trying to help them with the berm and to come to, and to try and help shield them from the pathway. Next slide, please. So this is just a blow up. It looks like Sonia had these in her proposal about the, the turnaround on ACHD proposed at the end of Loggers Pass. And with that, I, I look forward to your approval. I think it's a nice addition. I think we've tried to work with the Benfords and I, I believe probably the Benfords are here this evening and that's, that's great. We look forward to their input. And I'll stand for any questions.
Council, any questions for the applicant at this time? All right. Thank you very much. Chris or Adrian, do we have anyone sign up in advance?
Mr. Mayor, we do have four people signed in, the first of which, actually, we do have an HOA representative here, Annette Alonso for the Southern Rim Coalition.
Okay. Are they on the line? Or?
Mr. Mayor, I do not see her on the call.
Okay, Anique Benford.
Okay. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yep, hear you great.
Great. Anique Benford, three one zero one Mesa Way, Meridian. Good evening. My husband and I own the property to the south that, that we've been looking at on the, on the slide. And we're south of the proposed subdivision. We did express concerns to planning and zoning regarding the public walking paths, which will run the full length of our property. We, we're concerned mostly about a loss of privacy and an increased risk of trespassing. We also did express the concerns about the impact this development will have on our ability to effectively flood irrigate our land. The city of Meridian's pathways master plan states that the city should be sensitive to private owners when trails are posed adjacent to private property. The city also acknowledges in the master plan that pathway safety is quote, "a major concern of both pathway users and those whose property is adjacent to a pathway." According to the plan, one of the city's recommended improvements to address privacy of adjacent owners is the use of good neighbor fencing and a planting of landscape buffers. Also to address trespassing concerns is to clearly distinguish public pathways from private property with vegetative buffers and the use of good neighbor fencing. The existing fence will not discourage trespassing. You can see in some of these slides, I have pictures of the fencing. Much of it is pole fencing that is easily slipped through and much of it is being held together with wire and twine. Planning and zoning did recommend that the developer provide fencing and enhance landscaping to address privacy and safety concerns. They also recommended the berm to allow us to fully irrigate while still controlling our water. Right now, we're able to run our irrigation water long enough to fully saturate our high spots, but some of the water does run off into the adjacent neighbors pasture, which has never been a problem. But that will become a problem when that pasture becomes a walking path. We feel it's the developer's responsibility to mitigate impact to our ability to effectively and responsibly irrigate our land as well as to provide privacy and trespassing mitigation. We have been in communication with the developer and his party about the, the landscaping plan. However, we did not see that the fence was graphically depicted on the plan and we didn't see any enhanced landscaping for a buffer as recommended by planning and zoning. We, we have been in communication regarding the height of the berm and the 18 inch berm will not provide a sufficient but buffer to control our water. We talked about the three foot berm and yes, we will allow that to come onto our property. We understand, you know, that, that they're saying that the, with the 18 inch berm, they just don't have room, you know, really to, with their setbacks on that walking path. So we did offer to allow the slope to come onto our property to achieve our goal. However, we would prefer not to have to give up a portion of our land just so we can continue to use it productively. We want to ensure that the following is made a provision of the development agreement that the three foot berm run the full length of our property with enhanced landscaping, not just to that stub road. We need it to go beyond. We'd like to have that good neighbor fencing and for it to be wrought iron, not chain link, running the full length of the property, not just to that road. It needs to go to the very end of our property. And we would like to be able to sign, to sign off that all of this work was completed prior to issuance of building permits. During planning and zoning, one of the commissioners noted that it is the developer who's creating the changes that's going to most affect our property. So it should be the developer's responsibility. And we agree, we feel it's not unreasonable to request these conditions to mitigate the impact that this development creates on the usability, safety, and livability of our property. And we did put some pictures in there. I think there's three pictures of the fencing, the existing fencing that on their landscape plan, it shows the existing fence to remain. I don't know if I can move these, if I'm controlling them.
You are not. I'm moving through them for you.
Okay. And then there's two or, two or three other photos. So when Glacier Springs went in on our, to the, let's see, that would be to the west of us on our west border. So the right there, that picture is bordering Cabela Creek. That is a landscaping berm that the developer put in to mitigate the lights from a new road. The new road would put lights right into our house. And so in that case, the developer provided that landscape berm. And then there's a photo, that's, that's the same landscape berm against Cabela Creek. And then I think one of the very, so that photo, that's Glacier Springs, they're on to the west, our west border. And you can't really see it very closely there, but that developer did put in a landscape berm and permabark, full landscaping and a full fence. There you go. Along that whole border of our property. And those, those were concerns that we brought up to planning and zoning and to the city. And, you know, we would, we would really like it if something similar was, you know, to come out of this for us as well. That's all I have.
Thank you. Council, any questions? All right. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Adrian.
Next on the list is Matt Benford.
If you could state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, it's Matt Benford, three one zero one Mesa Way. My wife did a great job describing what we're after. My, my main concern is our irrigation. And if you can pull up the picture on the, where the road, actually, the initial project, where, where, where they planned on ending the berm and the fence. Yeah. So all our irrigation, if you look to the left of that, which is the, what is that, the west, south or north, north corner of our property boundary, that's where all the water congregate. So what we're asking is that that berm when and fence, that it, it would extend beyond what they're showing as their proposal. And if they don't, we're just going to flood the crap out of them. So I, I don't know how else to ask for this, but that berm and fence needs to really extend all the way to Glacier Bay, which is the. which is the uh what is that, the uh, the west side of that diagram? So um I don't know how else we can flood irrigate unless they propose that fence and berm to extend beyond. And if they don't, we're just gonna flood that, you know, that road and that, that drainage ditch with our flood irrigation. And the, the other concern I have is basically where that ends up in that corner to the, to the left of the red is um we have a, a drain field uh that was put in by um Glacier Bay that runs over to Ten Mile Creek. And my neighbor and myself, our flood irrigation all leads to that ditch. So during construction, I'm, I'm kind of worried that um that that might be compromised during the construction phase. So anyway, I don't, I don't know that that leads to a few questions for the city council or for the developer, but um those are our concerns.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel, Councilman Cavanagh.
Mr. Binford, I don't know if you're still on the line. I guess I, I do have a question for you.
Yeah.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, your, obviously you flood your whole property. So the concern you're sharing is not only the potential for water from when you're flood irrigating to impact the potential homeowners, but to flood that street as well. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct. Because that's where that street is, is the, the low spot in our irrigation.
Right.
And so it, it, everything funnels down to that point.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions?
Sorry.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Benford.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. Um, last on the list is Ryan Reckla.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'm attempting to unmute Mr. Reckla and it comes up that I cannot unmute him because he's an older, one and older version of Zoom.
Um, Chris, can you unmute everybody instead of just one?
I was able to promote him to panelist, which I believe is allowing him to speak as soon as he comes back in.
Mr. Mayor, just for clarification too, either for you or Chris or Adrian. I think Adrian said that there was one other person that at least at the start of the public hearing that was signed up to testify, but we couldn't hear them either. Just that we get a chance to maybe circle back and make sure they testify before we wrap things up.
Yeah, yeah, Councilman Cavanagh, um, I did not show them as being on the call. So they probably signed up in advance and did not make up, did not come into the call, but we will still ask for anybody else.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Reckla is with us now.
Okay. If you say your name and address for the record, please. Mr. Reckla, we can't hear you if you're speaking.
It appears there is no audio.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Burr?
Would it be uh appropriate for Ryan to call in just on a cell phone, you know, on a cell phone to us on a, on a landline maybe um instead of using the Zoom option? If he can hear us.
Chris, can you?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, yes, I will. I'm gonna put that up on the screen for Andrew Carr. I just received that same message from Jared Day on IT recommending that. So I'm just getting to that now. Mr. Reckla, if you can see the screen, it's getting there now. That is the number to call. Area code six, six, nine, and you'll enter that nine digit ID. Once prompted.
Why he's hopefully calling in. If there's anybody else who would love to testify on this application, if you can raise your hand and let us know, that way we can get you set up to be the next speaker.
Looks like we have Mr. Reckla. He will need to press star nine on his phone in order for me to recognize and unmute him. And there you are, sir.
Hello?
There we go.
Ah, yeah, I got kicked off the Zoom side. I had to call in. But that's all right. You know, actually, I didn't really want to speak. I wasn't planning on speaking. I just wanted to be available too if I had any issues with what was going on. But I've missed the last five minutes of it, so I'm not actually really even sure what's going on. But I, I'm faithful that Dan Lardy is taking care of it for me.
This, Mr. Reckla, we were waiting for you. If you could just say your name and address for the record so we can attribute you.
Sorry about that. Yeah, my, my name is Ryan Reckla. My address is four, one, two, three, West Garnett Street, Boise, Idaho, eight, three, seven, oh, three.
All right. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Reckla? Okay. Thank you very much.
Sorry about that.
Problem, you're good.
Yeah.
Would the applicant like to come, or I'll do one more quick one to see if there's anybody else on, on the call who would like to provide testimony? And see no hands raised was the applicant to, to come back and close us up.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask one question? I, I think the applicant could probably answer this.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, so if the applicant answer, I, I noticed on the posting that it says it's four point two six acres, but the staff report says it's four point three five acres. So if you could just explain the, the difference in that acreage, so it's clear for the record.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, Councilman, or uh, Council members, this is Dan Lardy. So uh, as far as the acreage goes, uh, the county site for some reason hasn't shown as four point two six acres or, and uh I checked with my surveyor and the surveyor, uh, you know, he attributes that it is four point three five acres per survey on the ground.
Perfect, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Council members, uh, so back to um the Bin, Mr. and Mrs. Binford, uh, we don't, I don't think we have a problem placing a berm across the road and across our, all the way to our west boundary. Um, the, the question would be is, we are, we are supposed to provide a link to them for future development by ACHD. The uh, if they, if ACHD will allow that berm, then that, then we can place it. Um, the other, the other issue I had, uh, so during planning and zoning, we were asked to provide an enhanced landscaping plan. However, no one could uh could place a quantity on that or what a, what that entailed. So we provided an enhanced landscape plan and of course, uh, now it, it seems to be a moving target, which is what we were afraid of. Uh, if, the uh, Mr. and Mrs. Binford, uh, their property, yes, it's, it is important and I, and I appreciate and want them to reserve their private property rights. The um, the, they also had made a mention of the fact that uh they don't want to give up any land for, for a taller berm. Uh, that's fine. We're okay with the eighteen inch berm as stated by staff. The um we can try some different fencing, no problem, as long as it meets uh City of Meridian's code. We're, I think we're okay with that uh within reason. They also made a mention that they would like final approval of such things that are, that are established by, and I, and I just don't think that's a good precedent to send to set by staff or by the city of Meridian in accordance with, you know, just saying that, hey, your neighbor can decide what you can and can't do uh with, with the Binfords. It has always been proven to be a moving target. And um so with that, uh I will, I can stand for any other questions.
Mr. Mayor?
That's one pro.
I'd like to ask the applicant their thoughts on um the commission's recommendation to require a lot to block two to be converted to common lot.
Mr. Mayor, uh, Councilmember Perro, the uh, we have actually created that lot because the ACHD would like to actually put a turnaround there, which makes that lot non-buildable. So we made it, we've turned it into a uh, a common lot.
Mr. Mayor, a follow-up?
That's one pro.
Is that actually gonna be a functional um open space for the residents or is that just gonna be empty space? What, what, what is that gonna consist of?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Perro, so with the, with the turnaround there, until the road extends, that lot will just be landscaped. There's, there's not much left there to do much with. Uh, it'll, it has a drainage facility on it and then it will have some, some grass and be, be landscaped.
Just a question, uh, ha, is it a functioning turnaround that people would be able to drive upon with the, some sort of road structure? What, what does that mean turnaround from ACHD's standpoint or our expectations?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, yes, it uh, it is, it has to be a paved functioning turnaround. The sidewalk will continue and terminate at the boundary or the berm to, or the to be berm. Uh, but uh, in order for fire trucks to go in and turn around, they will have to uh turn around on the curve, on the curb. And then there'll be a surface there for them to turn around at.
Uh, Mr. Mayor? Councilman Hogan? I just want to be sure, I, I completely understand what I'm looking at. So uh, now that road is currently constructed. What we see there, that road with that curve is in place right now, correct?
Mr. Mayor, uh, Councilman Hogan, whi- which road are you, are you speaking of?
Uh, we're, that, that surrounds block two.
Oh. So East Loggers Pass. It, it is constructed up to our western boundary where that red arrow is on the slide that's up.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. Uh, on the preliminary plat where you have the blue star, that or purple star, whatever uh, the schematic to the left, where block two is, that, that particular road, is that in place?
Mr. Mayor, Council, Councilmember Hogan, no, that road is not in place.
Okay, so also, if I may follow up, Mr. Mayor? Councilman Hogan? So that block two then is, is going to be a drain for future development. Is that correct?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, Council, Councilmember Hogan, the um the drain on, on this, on this slide that's up, it's shown as a skinny drain and, and we don't need that much for this particular roadway. The, cause we're only, we're only required to hold our, our development on this particular site. Future developments would be required to retain their own drainage on their site. This slide that's up uh doesn't have a representation of that turnaround. It has, it has an alternate turnaround that we were attempting, but uh, the ACHD did not like. And I had one in my, in my uh PowerPoint proposal or PowerPoint that showed that. And I was trying to think if uh Sonya had it in her proposal or her uh her information. I don't remember that she did.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, uh, this can take, I, I thought that uh, yeah, I saw something with it, with the turnaround. But uh, if that road is not there with block two, to build that berm across there to continue to the west boundary would, would, is something they could do. And yes, if they develop their property, they would plow right, you know, the develop, whoever develops that property would plow right through and take it out, but that'd be of no concern once the property is developed, but you can accomplish finishing out that berm and fencing to uh, to that other boundary. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hogan, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Cavanagh?
I guess a couple of questions. First about, about the berm and, and that road. The, the residential homes though are gonna access, like their access is gonna come off of that road, correct?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Cavanagh, yes, that is correct.
Okay. I'm struggling to see how they're gonna be able to access their home in a berm. But maybe you guys have that, that figured out. My, my question though, Mr. Mayor, if I may, uh pertains to the pathway. So as I'm looking on this, it looks like that the pathway starts along the canal and then goes through the neighborhood and then reconnects along the canal, kind of circumvents the canal. And I'm curious if I'm, if I'm seeing that correct and why we're doing that as opposed to just having it follow the nature of the canal as with the rest of the pathway.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Cavanagh, so the, the pathway does jog through the neighborhood. It does show that uh, I, I guess your pathway, the city of Meridian's pathway master does say that it should follow the creek, uh, Ten Mile Creek. However, the homeowner would like to keep his home and it's within thirty feet of the canal, which doesn't provide us a pathway to put uh, a pathway. I guess it doesn't, it doesn't provide us enough surface to get the cross section of the pathway through that portion of the, the canal through, by his home and et cetera.
So, Mr. Mayor, one more, if I may. Dan, I guess, I guess I'm not triggered. You're saying that you don't have enough land to be able to build the pathway there and so you can build it up against the other neighbor? Cause that's how it looks and, and I guess I'm, I'm trying to wrap my head around.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, Commissioner, uh, Councilmember Cavanagh, so the, the city requires a certain amount of distance. The Napa Highway or Napa Meridian Irrigation District who manages the canal requires another fifty feet of easement. With that, there's only thirty feet from the existing home to the center line of the canal or, excuse me, to the, to the uh easement of Napa Meridian Irrigation District. So there's no room to get that pathway in there. It, it, it's just really tight right here. I don't know if, I don't know if I'm, my cursor is actually moving anything.
No, I'm not seeing it.
You're not seeing it. Sorry.
That's okay. I, we're trying to make this work together. I, I appreciate your comments.
That, that's our, uh, so, and that's really the reason why the pathway winds through the uh, through the, through the site.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes, Deputy Chief.
Uh, I did email the alternate turnaround to Chris. I don't know if he has access to his email, so you can see what Councilman Hogan was asking about.
I assume Chris is looking for something right now. And I guess I'm, I'll ask the question from the conversation at planning and zoning. Are, is the pathway amongst some of the reasons why planning and zoning was more interested in seeing this property redevelop as a group compared to individual? Or were there other reasons, I mean, from a staff? If you, Sonya, if you can try to clarify or say why?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, primarily it was because of the open space and site amenity requirement, doesn't exist when the site is below five acres in size. So that was a lot of it. They wanted to, they wanted to see more common open space area. And they're afraid that if this one's developed outside of that, then maybe another one of the three properties would also develop individually without common area and site amenities. This, this project does have some, I mean, it has the multi-use pathway. That's really about it.
Well, and I'll, I'll speak to it, because I don't want to put Mr. Cavanagh on the spot, but I think that's an issue with Glacier Springs as well. As I lived in that for a brief period with my in-laws, and there's really no amenities in that subdivision either, or open space, with the exception of the pathway, which currently even dead ends.
Mr. Mayor, you are 100% correct. Aside from some greened-up drainage pond, we do not have any amenities in that area except for a, a pathway that, that dead ends.
So, Mr. Mayor, just to follow up on the new preliminary plat that's up there with the turnaround, that would allow the access for fire, for fire trucks to turn around until such time the other property's developed to drive completely through. And, and Chief, is, is that, that I assume is adequate for our fire department?
Uh, Mayor and Councilman Hogan, yeah, the, this was approved. The previous plot that was up was denied by ACHD for the turnaround, and this was the alternate, and it meets the, the fire code, so we are okay with it.
Okay, thank you, Chief. And Mr. Mayor, if I might ask a question of, of Mr. Lardy then. With the pathway, looking at that plan and how the pathway comes out, would that, how, how is that pathway gonna be constructed? Is that part of a sidewalk now, or what, what's the plan for that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hogan, this, this is not the current turnaround. I apologize, there were several iterations of this. And as, as you can well see, it's, it is, just, Chris, if you could find the turnaround in my PowerPoint, is the one that we were, is the one that we're proposing, and the one that will probably survive. There it is.
Yeah, okay.
That, that might be more helpful to you, Mr. Hogan.
Yes, it is, Mr. Mayor, and, and then, yes, that, that's the one I recall, I recall seeing one that it was this one. So, back to Deputy Chief Bonjorno, it looks like 46 feet, that meets the requirements for the fire department?
Uh, Mayor and Councilman Hogan, no, it does not. It needs to be 48 feet.
48, okay.
Yes, sir.
And, and that, the, Mr. Mayor and, and Dan, that, it's blurry, so is that 49 feet or 46 feet? I, I really can't tell.
Mr. Mayor, Deputy, Councilmember Hogan, I apologize, I am looking at the same slide and you had me at the same disadvantage. It, it's easy to turn it to 48. And it, and it will fit. But I, I don't have the larger plan with me, I apologize.
Yeah, Mayor and, and Councilman Hogan, if, if that goes to 48 feet, then it will meet the fire code. I apologize, I thought I had the latest one.
And Dan, just to clarify, if you have to berm that area, does that, you still think you've got the space to put 48 feet into that?
Mr. Mayor, I believe, yes, even with, even with we mov- moving that to 48 feet, we, we can slide it to the north just a little bit in order to accommodate a berm to, to assist the, or to be a good neighbor to our neighbors.
Mr. Mayor, you also have the Binfords are asking to speak again, if you're willing to entertain more testimony.
Council, I'm gonna defer to you all as we are at the applicant, and they are the ones to speak last.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Hogan?
I, I did have further questions for, for the Binfords, based on the information I received. Can I have one of them come up, or open up to answer, answer a question about the berming and fencing?
Counsel, are we open to bring back? Let's be, okay, I'm sending it here, and yes, so we will give the applicant another shot at this once the Binfords provide comment, or answer questions, or both.
Hi, this, this is Anique, am I unmuted now?
Yes, you are. If you could read your address for the record.
3101 Mesa Way, Meridian. And I would, I just wanted to clarify, I'm not sure if Mr. Lardy was confused by my testimony. We're not opposed to giving up part of our, a portion of our land in order to achieve a three-foot berm, because quite frankly, without a three-foot berm, we probably are not going to be able to flood irrigate without, you know, trespassing our water onto this subdivision. We just wanted to, you know, make a note that we are doing that. We are giving up a part of, a portion of our land in order to achieve the goal that we need to be able to irrigate based on this, you know, development. That, that was really the only comment that I wanted to make, that we're, we're not in any way opposed to giving up a portion of our land to do that, so. And then as far as the enhanced landscaping, that's, you know, that's something that we can work out at a point down the road. We just were asking for more of a vegetative buffer versus just trees, you know, spread out throughout the berm. And then I think that was my husband, there was one other comment he wanted to make, but I can't remember what he, what he was saying. Yeah, just, I think just that the berm and the fencing do extend all the way down to the, to the very end of our property.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Hogan.
Yeah, so I wanted to make sure that, that one of the questions I had was about the height of the berm, because there's been discussion about 18 inches and three foot. So a three-foot berm, the length of your property is, is acceptable,
Yes.
along with enhanced fencing, and that's something I'll ask Dan about in, in a bit when we go back to him. Enhanced, with, with the, not the pole fencing, not chain link, but something that looks a little nicer.
Yeah, and should, we were kind of hoping that it would match whatever they're putting on the other side.
Okay, I, I will follow up with him on that. The enhanced landscaping, when I was looking at the photos that you, you were showing, and I, I think it was Glacier Bay, that it had the houses and they, Chris brought in the photo so we could see that, yes, it was bermed up a little bit. There were some trees along there, but they were on your side. Were those trees that you had planted?
So there's trees on both sides. There are some evergreen trees that sit on top of the berm that the developer put in, and then we've also planted trees on our side, some poplars and willows.
Okay, and Mr. Mayor, and, and the reason I ask, you know, we throw around words like enhanced and different things. I, I really don't know what that means. What it means to me is completely something different to someone else. So I, I didn't know if you think, is that enhanced? Is that something that would be acceptable? If that was on the other, over here on this, this berm area and, and on the other. So that's, that's kind of, I, I guess, can you give me a definition of, of enhanced?
Oh, was that question to me?
Yeah, for you, for, for you. What, what would that look like?
Well, enhanced landscaping is just more than just a few trees flunked down on top of a berm, because the situation that we're, we're worried we're going to run into is that where that slope of the berm will be extended onto our property. Now we're responsible for doing something with it. So we're gonna have this huge dirt berm that we're going to have to try and control weeds on, and, you know, we'll eventually have to plant something on it because it's, you know, kind of hideous. So that's our big concern, is we would like it to look like a landscaped area, not just a big dirt berm. You know, that's kind of outside of our control. And, and it is an ambiguous term, enhanced landscaping. What does that mean? Does that mean, you know, landscape fabric? Does it mean perma-bark? Does it mean gravel? Extra shrubs? So that's, that's kind of what, what we were trying to figure out is, how, how do we make sure that even if this goes into a development agreement, that there's a berm and a fence and landscaping included, how do we make sure that we don't end up with just this dirt mound that's completely hideous? You know, that, I, I guess we're just feeling a little bit out of control with, with how that's going to look.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Hogan.
Yeah, and, and I certainly understand that. And that's why a, a lot of these questions, we're just trying to figure out, how, how do we make this work? It sounds like, you know, there's been discussions and there's been some agreements, as, as long as we can make sure everyone's understanding the same thing. Would you anticipate, I know the developer would put landscaping on, on their side of the fence, whatever that looks like to be determined. Are, are you expecting landscaping to be done on your side by the developer of, of that line, your property?
Well, that would be preferable.
Okay, good, good to know, thank you.
And this is a question, I don't know, it's, because we're talking a little bit about the fence. You know, typically along pathways, it's a four-foot wrought iron fence, which is what is, I believe, what is generally recommended, but I also am under the understanding from, we typically do not like to fence two sides of a pathway as a general rule, so I'm guessing that we do not want both sides of the fence to be identical if one side is a four-foot wrought iron. But I wonder if Garrett, or I don't know if we have anyone from the police department on, or if it's Sonya that could sit, weigh in on that aspect.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I was only half listening. Members of the council, were you, were you referencing the fence line?
Yeah, just the, the, typically, I don't think the police department supports having a fully fenced pathway on both sides, and this, would this typically be a four-foot wrought iron on the, on the new home side, and then do we want the same or not want the same on the other side?
Well, we have code that actually speaks to that. And I believe that they can do a four-foot solid, if they're wanting to do a solid material, with two feet of semi-private on the top, or they can do six-foot open vision or four-foot open vision. So if, if there's a preference of counsel as to if it's closed vision for screening purposes for the Binfords, they should, should probably specify that as our, as our code does allow the open vision as well.
Sonya, my, my question went more to fencing both sides of a pathway. That's what my understanding is, that we typically do not like to see both sides completely fenced in, because it basically creates an area where no one can escape if there is an attack in that area. I'm being, you know, that's what I have, have heard.
Um, well, I, I haven't understood that from the police department, but maybe you have. The, the standards, that's why the standards restrict solid fencing to four feet, so that there is some visibility of the pathway. But again, if you, if there's somebody there from police tonight that would like to speak up, they could clarify that.
Mayor and City Council, I was just texting Sean to see if he's on.
Yes, his name.
Um, I don't have any specific clarification on that. Um, I'd probably have to do a little more research to figure out what kind of precedent we've set in regards to those pathways, because a lot of times it, if there's no lighting, and then, like you were saying, Mayor, with fencing on both sides, that can bring on some safety challenges. So that'd be something that I'd have to get back to staff with, to clarify.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Hogan?
If I might throw this in though, as we consider this, I, I would think if, if it's required to have at least one side lower for lighting, safety, access, that sort of thing, it would be on the property to be developed, as opposed to Binford's side. I think they should have the six-foot privacy fence that allows their property to be blocked from, from the pathway based on, they were there, and, and so that's kind of how I see that, and we could research that, and if a lower fence is required, that it would be placed on, on the property under, the Bannock Ridge property as the homes are developed.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, you may.
City code does not, it, it prohibits a six-foot tall solid fence adjacent to pathways and interior common open space areas, so please don't make that a requirement, or it will be in conflict with our code.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Hogan.
So if, I might ask, so it, we, we cannot have on either side a six-foot fence, or just on one side it's allowed, but not, not two sides?
No, a, a six-foot tall solid fence is not allowed adjacent to pedestrian pathways or interior common open space areas for visibility reasons. In accordance with SECTED standards. Again, if you're doing a, a solid fence, you can go up to four feet in height. Just that in itself, or they could be allowed to add two feet of semi-private fence, which is defined by city code as being 20% closed vision with 80% open vision. Or you could do a open vision fence.
Okay, uh, Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Hogan.
Uh, to follow up with Sonya then, so they could have a four-foot solid, we'll say vinyl fence for four feet, have the open vision lattice work type of thing for the next two feet. So it's a six-foot fence, and there's no prohibition, it has to be bermed to, for the irrigation purposes, that fence can sit on top of that needed berm, is that correct?
That is correct. There's nothing in our code that would prohibit that, that I'm worrying.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and, and what I'm referring to more to is the, the concept that I believe is what I've heard from our chief says, we typically don't like to have two sides of a pathway completely fenced. And that would be four-foot open vision on both sides even. And I think there's, there's probably some distance thresh- thresholds where that's not an issue, or lighting thresholds. You know, I've got a, right down from my house on both sides, me, I've got two micro paths which are, you know, probably about 70 feet in length, which are fenced on both sides by open vision. But I believe that as you extend the length of a pathway, and you don't have an escape point for people within that space, that's what we're really talking about, and I don't know the length of this pathway that we're, that runs along this area to know if it is longer than police may or may not like to have completely enclosed pathway.
And Mayor? We're, we're trying, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Harper?
Mayor, members of council, I, I agree with you, Mayor. This is kind of an interesting project, and it's kind of hard to figure out exactly what it looks like from looking on this little map, but I, I would
But I, I would agree, I mean, we, we want to make it as, as safe as possible for people who are traveling through this area on foot or on bikes or families, whatever it may be. So, I mean, putting two large fences on both sides, I don't think would be something that we would recommend. Uh, but I'd, to be honest with you, would really like to see it in person to get a better depiction of what it looks like.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogan.
You know, I have some similar in our subdivision where we had an existing subdivision. They've got the six foot solid fencing, cause it's, it's an older part of the development. They ended up, where Rita Husky Park is, they ended up developing crease and lateral as, as a pathway. And uh, they have the four foot open fence on, on the new development side to, to provide that light access and complete lack of privacy to their backyards, but uh, that's another issue. I, if, if I might ask one of the Benfords, uh, uh, since we're, we're kind of trying to nail down details to, to make things work. I, I just, I, I want to get their input on a three foot berm with a, a solid four foot fencing and a two foot uh, open lattice type of system. Uh, their thoughts on that?
I think that would be ideal. Um, and like you said, if it can sit on top of the berm, that's going to provide us, you know, not only the ability to irrigate, so we have the berm now that's a barrier and a buffer for hard water. But then also, you know, something that helps to protect our privacy as well. And we're, we're not opposed to an open, I mean, our understanding in, in researching this was that it had, that it needed to be kind of an open, open fencing. But I mean, if, if you could do a solid with, you know, the, the open lattice work on top, as high as we can go would be great.
Always, way sure.
Yeah, I, uh, Mr. Mayor and, and uh, Monica, yes, and, and that would go all the way to the end of your property line.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, that would, that would be the, the plan and I think that then the developers agreed to that. So uh, uh, and if uh, you're good with that, that hopefully rectifies that and making sure the drainage stays open for your water and your neighbor's water to exit the property during, during development, so.
Yes.
Counsel, would you like to hear from the applicant again at this point in time? Does they have the last word? Just want to make sure you're done with the Benfords at this point in time. Okay, we'll ask the applicant to, Dan, if you would like to provide any feedback on the comments you just heard.
Mr. Mayor, council members, um, so as far as, as far as what I understand is we're trying to, we want to accomplish a three foot berm from all the way across our south boundary, including the roadway and uh, the, our uh, open space. Along with that, a four foot uh, four foot solid fence with, with an open two foot lattice on top. Uh, and then other fencing may be, may be determined in the future for our development. Is that what I'm understanding?
I think that's what Councilman Hogan has suggested.
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. Uh, with that, uh, I'll stand for any questions. Thank you, have a good evening.
Mr. Mayor, if I might follow up with Dan. Uh, you're, you're good with that uh, situation? Now, it may be that your property uh, on, on the other s- the, the, the uh, Benford property, those homes you develop, you know, they don't want any fencing and it just accesses the pathway. But if there is fencing requested, it, it would be four foot.
Mr. Mayor, council member Hogan, yes, that, that is the understanding.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Kavanagh.
Question for Sonia. Sonia, on, on this original application that took all three properties together, did the pathway run along the Ten Mile Creek continually, or did, was it broken up and ran through the neighborhood?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Kavanagh, I believe that it went uh, around through the neighborhood as well. Chris, there is a, I believe a copy of the previous plat in my presentation, if you could go back a couple slides. Or the existing approved plat, I should say. Um, go back one more, please. Thank you. Yeah, you can see the pathway, they were trying to retain that existing home along the north boundary adjacent to the creek as well. So that pathway ran along the southern and western boundary, um, similar to what it is now.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Is that Mr. Nary?
Yes.
M- Mr. Member of the council, I just want to be sure if you, if your desire is that the, that the fencing on the Bannock Ridge side of the pathway is limited to four feet in height, that you specifically call that out as part of your motion. Cause otherwise they would still be able to, to put a four foot uh, fence with two foot lattice on their side, cause the code would allow it. So if you want to make sure to limit it to four feet, I would include that in your motion.
Yeah, and, and that was my concern. I mean, the three foot berm with the four foot fence with the two foot lattice, that's a nine foot barrier. I, I mean, that's, that's huge. Um, especially when you're on four foot, and this is, maybe this, there's no redevelopment of this property for the next thirty years, forty years, who knows? But uh, regardless, a nine foot fence in that location does not seem to be appropriate along a pathway.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogan.
Uh, yeah, I, I, and I understand that, but we are requiring that three foot, foot uh, berm. If other council members may go, you know, a four foot solid fence uh, on top of the berm should be plenty. You know, I just trying to figure that out. If, if they get a six foot fence on top of that, that enhances the privacy and, and any trespass issues, so. And maybe with the berm, you know, a berm, you can, you can walk on and jump a four foot fence. So that's from a privacy standpoint, I was, that's why I was including it with the extra lattice on top that's see-through, but harder to, harder to jump. So, and if we were to do that, yes, I could see the need for a four foot fence on, on the other side.
Mayor.
Mr. Harper.
Mayor, members of council, I, I just kind of reached out to get some clarification. And I think our code is pretty clear on, on when it comes to fencing on pathways. SEPTED kind of, SEPTED rules kind of vary, but um, I know Sonia was talking about the code and I think it's important that we stick as closely to that because that was developed more than anything for, for safety reasons.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Barton.
I think Councilman Hogan's uh, solution in these circumstances make good sense. To the south and then the accommodation of the north with the four foot limit. All of that seems appropriate.
Counsel, do I have any further questions you'd like to ask, or do I have a motion? To close the public hearing, or what direction?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
I move that we close the public hearing for H two zero one nine zero one four three.
Second.
I have a motion a second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed name? Yeah, I just have it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Kavanagh.
I'm happy to kick things off uh, for deliberation. I really love our council in that we, we take these small issues and we really wrestle with them and dig into them and try and find a, a solution that benefits everybody. And I appreciate our work on that tonight. That said, I don't think that I'm in support of this application and, and for, for one big reason. And it's something that I've learned by being on the council for six years are some of the well-intended actions that have long-lasting repercussions as it pertains to, to sidewalks in, in Meridian, specifically in South Meridian, where we have just kind of this patchwork makeup of sidewalks where you've got sidewalks and then a big gap and then more sidewalks. And then ultimately it's us as the councils trying to come up with taxpayer dollars to, to try and fill in those gaps. And I worry is that on this particular piece where you went from kind of three pieces of land with one total project that would have filled in a gap on a sidewalk there, that if we part and piece this, that will never solve the sidewalk problem um, on, on, on victory between Locust Grove and, and Meridian Road. I like the application as was previously presented. I'm, I'm not supportive of this DA. I really applaud the applicant trying to make something work here. Obviously that connection of the pathway is a nice connection for um, South Meridian. Again, it would serve my neighborhood well because we've got a pathway to nowhere. Um, I just think that if, if we aren't beholden to keep getting these sa- sidewalks connected along the way, that future councils are going to be saying, well, why, why did the past city council approve this? Or they're gonna be saying, let's kick in some, you know, taxpayer dollars to get the sidewalk connected there. So I, I can't support it.
A- and while I don't have a vote on this, if we have to build a nine foot structure for a pathway, I think that we are probably not approving the right project. Now, that, that doesn't seem to be, um, i- whether it's a timing issue or anything else, that to me seems overkill for any pathway in our community. That's just my two cents.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogan.
Yeah, a- a- and I understand that, that's a, that's an issue that, you know, I, I'd, I'd be willing, if it, if it helps your heartburn, uh, you know, with the three foot berm to go with the four foot solid fence, that gives them seven feet. I mean, part of it is if people want to do harm or do wrong, they'll figure out a way to do it, whether it's seven foot or nine foot. You know, if, if that, if that works a little better uh, for, for you and it still gives them privacy because that would be a solid fence. And from their, their viewpoint, that would be seven foot that they can't see and people walking on the path. That's a, that's a seven foot uh, fences as well. And then you'd have the four foot fence like, like we have here in my subdivision. One side has the six foot fence, the other side has the four foot fence. Um, I'm coming from it, having been in Binford shoes where we were a farm property and, and development moved in around us and working with the developer, trying to make that work and, and put those things into place. So I'm, I'm very aware of how they're, they're being squeezed and it happens and, and you're, you're willing to go along with it, but you're trying to protect what you have to a certain degree to keep that, that feeling of uh, of, of uh, open space, if, if you will, to, to as much as you can. So that, that's my desire there. Council members feel like, hey, just go with the four foot fence, um, that's the best we can do, that, I, I'm fine with that.
Now, and Councilman Hogan, I think you kind of hit it on the head. That this, to me, we are trying to protect too much in this area. We have another home on this property that doesn't want to redevelop, which is creating some of the challenges. You don't, kind of going back to the other point, you've got Glacier Springs, which doesn't really have it too many amenities or, or other elements. This piece of property would be in the same situation. Um, you, you throw in a large fence for the pathway. It just seems to be there's a lot of elements that we're trying to make accommodate an area which maybe is not ready to develop altogether. Again, I don't have a vote, so I'm not gonna tell you where, how high your fence should be or, or where, what you should do. But you know, the, this almost goes back a little bit to last, to me, it's a little round peg in a square hole. Trying to make it work when the area is not ready to redevelop is what I'm hearing.
I agree.
That's, that, Mr. Mayor, I, I appreciate that, that perspective. And uh, if, if we're ready to move forward on it, we gotta find ways to make it work. They are providing eleven percent in an area that didn't, doesn't require it. It does move pathways, but if we are trying to slam a peg in there that doesn't fit, then uh, then we'll uh, just have to move on. So I will hold off on making any motion at the time.
Councilman Burr.
I, I mean, am I on? Yeah, I, I, I don't want to regurgitate what's been said. I agree with uh, Councilman Kavanagh.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
I haven't spoken a lot during this application because I'm wrestling with it and uh, I tend to agree with the commission's recommendation that they'd like to see this entire thirteen acres that was originally part of the DA developed together. That's tough because you have three different property owners who have very different ideas about what they want to do with their properties. But I think if we look at the big picture of what we as a city have set out to do with um, with our comprehensive plan, our focus has really been on, on trying to, to not develop in, in these small pieces in these five acre sections. It, it creates too much of a patchwork. And so just in that, in that vein, I would say that, that while I completely respect the applicant's um, right to pursue this, and I think that they have done as absolutely best they could possibly do with a small sized property. The, the plat that they've created, they really are, have worked very hard to make it work. Just from a big picture standpoint, I'd feel a lot more comfortable if, if we weren't allowing such small acreages to um, to develop unless they are in, completely surrounded by properties that are already annexed. Like we've discussed, our focus on infill projects, this is not one of those.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Kavanagh.
I'm not sure if anyone else wants to chime in. If not, I'm, I'm happy to make a motion.
Mr. Barton, would you like to speak on this item? Okay, I guess, Councilman Kavanagh, if you're up for it, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move that we deny item uh, six J, uh, DA for Bannock Ridge, H dash two zero one nine dash zero one four three.
Second. I have a motion a second to deny the application. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Nary.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Kavanagh, and, and second, just want to be clear. Your, your basis is you would like to remain with the current existing development agreement on this property and not allow this separation into separate pieces, and therefore it's not in the best interest of the city to uh, allow this amendment. Is that what I heard?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, Mr. Mr. Nary, thank you for, for uh, chatting me through that. You, you absolutely summarized my comments in my head, but probably not the exact way that I articulated them in my motion, so I appreciate that.
That's perfect, thank you.
If there's no discussion on the motion, Austin, quick to call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Barton.
Aye.
Kavanagh.
Aye.
Pro.
Aye.
Hogan.
Aye.
Burnt.
Aye.
Uh, the motion is adopted. Thank you very much to all for your time and attention this evening. Item six K is a public hearing for endorsing your living age twenty nineteen, zero one two seven. It's been requested to continue to May nineteenth. Bill, do I need to open the public hearing?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, was that a yes?
Yes, sir, yes.
Um, I'll,
Um, I'll, I'll open the public hearing on this item.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burr.
I move that we continue. Item number H dash two zero one nine dash zero one two seven. Andorra Senior Living to May 19th, 2020.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogan.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to continue the public hearing on, on item six K, age 2019 dash zero one two seven. Is there a discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed nay? Guys, have it. Next item up is ordinance seven eight, ordinance number twenty dash one eight seven eight. I'll ask the clerk to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number twenty dash one eight seven eight. An ordinance H two zero one nine dash zero one zero nine, Eddington Commons. For annexation of a parcel of land being a portion of the west half, southwest one quarter, southwest one quarter. Of section thirty-six, township four north, range one west, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho. As described in attachment A, and annexing certain lands and territory situated in Ada County, Idaho. And adjacent and contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Meridian as requested by the city of Meridian. Establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of fourteen point five six four acres of land from R U T. To R fifteen, medium high density residential zoning district in the Meridian City Code. Providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder. And the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law. And providing for a summary of the ordinance and providing for a waiver of the reading rules and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Would anyone like this ordinance read in its entirety? If not, is there any discussion on the ordinance? And Austin Cork to call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Barton.
We need a motion, Bill?
I don't think anybody made a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilwoman Pearl.
I move that we adopt ordinance number two zero dash one eight seven eight with a suspension of rules.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Is there a discussion on the motion?
Just sorry for interrupting things. Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, you're good. Uh, if not, the court called the roll.
Thanks again, Mr. Mayor. Barton.
Aye.
Kavanagh.
Aye.
Pearl.
Aye.
Hogan.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Excellent. All ayes, motion passes. Uh, we are reached to item eight, future meeting topics. Is there any item for future meetings? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burr.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogan.
Second.
I have a motion, second to adjourn the meeting and discussion on the motion. If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed nay? Uh, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, staff. Tonight went very smooth. Thank you all.
Thanks.